September 23rd, 2019. You joined us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Thank you. Okay, so you went to the hospital meeting and...
Yeah, and I invited them to come, I got some writing on there. I invited them to come here Monday at 6:00, I couldn't, one guy, a couple couldn't make it, but Wednesday at 6:00 I invited them, okay?
Okay.
Just Wednesday at 6:00.
So Dawn, would you please send out the meeting notification to the notify list that Wednesday, 6:00 PM, in the commission room at the courthouse, we will be meeting with the hospital board?
Right. And that's the packet I get, and I'll distribute one to you too, so that we all have this information. It shows the monthly, you know, financials primarily. And I'll make a copy, I didn't get to make a copy.
Is that how interesting the meeting is?
That's my artwork, that's probably just doing meetings. I can make some copies for the guys.
Yeah, and let's leave this one here for the meeting.
Well, I'll leave it here today, but yeah, but then I'll bring them back, I'll give you a copy in the gym.
Before we get started with the serious stuff, have you selected a venue for next Monday?
Yes.
What do you like?
I spoke to and ordered from the Mexican restaurant.
All right.
Three amigos. They're gonna bring it here at 1:00.
One next Monday?
Uh-huh, the 30th.
30th, yeah.
Yeah.
That's our budget for the meeting, or the pay for the meeting.
Payroll.
Yes. So we will...
Thursday, Monday at 1:00?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, 1:00 o'clock will be the lunch.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, we've got record duty.
Yeah, yeah. We'll still start at 10:00.
Yeah, and while I'm, I was just getting this while I was talking to...
Who's saying it? It's the courthouse.
Yeah, the courthouse.
The courthouse. The whole courthouse.
That's a lot of theirs.
Oh, okay, Energy Solutions Professionals. They have done work in Reno, Hodgman, Graham County, and Russell, Russell and Graham County hospitals, Hodgman County.
What is that?
Um, it looks like they do like an energy efficiency analysis and boiler plants, building envelope, chilled water, hot water system, distribution systems, chiller plants, conservation training controls, heat, HVAC, lighting, motors, pumps, and drives. Energy performance contracting, so to improve your energy efficiency.
Give me for our...
It would be, I guess, for any of our facilities, but...
You gonna say our public works, or...
It would be anything, it would be, well, they have three hospitals listed on here, and then counties, and a city, two cities, in Alice County and Reno County, I don't know what it is. We got our final bill from Mr. Hay, from Folsom Sievkin. The telephone conference with Jennifer O'Hare to review the email correspondence from us, that should really come out of the budget from the attorney, because we didn't even ask for that. And then, review Kdad's forms and regulations from an email from Jennifer O'Hare, I mean, we basically asked our county attorney for a response, and then she chose to turn it over to Mr. Hay. We didn't ask for any, anytime in the past, the commission has asked to speak to Mr. Hay and leave telephone conference with him. These bills, this is for $1,080 for some emails and some phone calls with Jennifer. I mean, if she can't respond to us...
When are those, what's the date on that?
It's...
For his conversations and stuff?
8/21 and 8/22 and 8/23.
And when did we, in our minutes, decide that we're no longer doing any business with him?
Well, we didn't, we didn't tell her that specifically until, one week ago, two weeks ago, I'm not sure. It was back when we had the conversation, I'd have to look.
It was about...
You guys have never officially turned it over?
I don't know, yeah.
Well, no, I responded to her that we didn't want to hear about his opinions anymore, because we actually asked her to do something, and she decided she needed additional counsel. That's how we got him in the first place, but she, she conferences with him about our letter to Kdad's, which I find interesting, how did she even get the letter to Kdad's? We didn't send that to her.
She asked me for, it's an open records.
So then she's charging us to talk to him about an open record that she solicited from our open records office. She's gonna have to pay that, I mean, I, we didn't ask her to do that.
Yeah, but it...
But he was your attorney for this case.
But we sent a letter, she asked for the letter in open records, then consulted with another attorney about the letter, and then charged us for it.
Consulted with your attorney.
But we didn't ask her to.
Yeah, but she...
It doesn't matter.
It does absolutely matter.
We got to terminate.
She got a public record from you, and then charged us for an attorney, for her to consult an attorney about it.
Yeah, but the attorney she consulted with is the board attorney.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't ask for that.
Yeah, but we don't have to ask her each time just to talk to Mr. Hay, do we?
We got to terminate him.
For a thousand dollars, I would think so.
Yeah, but we have been using him, Alexis, and so, about Kdad's, so I could see her consulting him, because we had previously used him, so in this case, I think we should pay it, because it was, it was our business with the nursing home consulting, and I know...
But don't you think if we wanted to know what Mr. Hay thinks, we would've just called him or emailed him? Why?
Yeah, but we have been going...
We should've got rid of him first.
We've been going through our county attorney, and for previous meetings, and that was a policy, the unwritten policy, so she probably, I'm not blaming her for this, I think...
But do you understand what happened? That's all I want to make up.
Yeah, yeah.
What happened with the Kdad's letter?
She can get that, but she was talking to him as part of the nursing home thing, that we hired Mr. Hay to lawyer up on.
But did we hire Mr. Hay to look at the letter to Kdad's?
No, but we hired him...
Who hired Mr. Hay to look at the letter to Kdad's?
We did.
No, we didn't.
She was consoling with our attorney on that issue.
When did we hire Mr. Hay?
Yeah, but we had him before, on a retainer situation.
You could call him today about the nursing home, you have to pay the dang bill.
Yeah, we, maybe it's not official that we said we want you officially got a retainer as our attorney for dealing with the nursing home issue, maybe we didn't do that, I don't know, maybe we did, maybe you guys did.
We got to get rid of him.
We agreed to a contract where he would bill us hourly.
Yeah.
And...
And since we had been dealing with him on the nursing home issue, Jennifer, we, Jennifer used him again, assuming that was what we were doing.
Did you send our Kdad's letter to Jennifer?
No, but that's open record, she could get that.
So anytime we talk about the nursing home now, we're giving her permission to acquire an open record?
Talk to that attorney, no, to talk to that attorney.
Yeah.
Until we fire that attorney, she can talk to him, and we're gonna pay the dang bill. Let's fire the attorney.
Absolutely.
We said we were going to.
I moved, I moved to...
Well, we already did that, didn't we?
No, we just notified Jennifer that we don't want her doing this, which she's done multiple times.
But, but, but I think we...
And where's the information, I want to know, because it says that she reviewed, it cost us $180 for our county attorney, Jennifer O'Hare, to talk to Mr. Hay to review potential brokers for the nursing home.
You can get that.
So where's that information?
Well, we should ask...
That's not open record, though.
Well, she should ask, we should ask her to come to a meeting on the agenda and discuss this stuff with her.
All right, I move...
In person?
I move to terminate the contract with Folsom Sievkin regarding Lincoln Park Manor.
I'll second that. Now, are there any implications in that that we don't know about? Is there a nine thirty clause or anything like that?
No, it was a, no, it was a bill by the hour.
Does he have any information that he was working with us for, on this nursing home issue, with Kdad's and with other people, with Mr. Accountant?
Okay, then I move to amend my motion to include, to include Mr. Hay to provide us all documentation regarding our correspondence with him and his correspondence with any other entity pertaining to the issues. Then he can release all the information to us.
Because also, we talked with the accountant.
Do you want to second my amendment?
I'll second your amendment.
Let's vote on the amendment. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
So it's been amended to say that we are, we are terminating the contract with Folsom Sievkin and requiring that Mr. Hay provide us all documentation for this case.
Pertaining to...
Yeah, pertaining to this issue.
Nursing home, Lincoln Park Manor issue and all the...
I would like to see everything that he has, because honestly, we've paid over $20,000. Well, I'll take a second on the amended motion.
I did that.
Jim did, right?
He did. That was on the amendment.
He seconded it.
That's on the amendment, let's vote on the motion. Let's, I need a second on the real, on the amendment.
I did that.
He did that earlier.
He's seconded it, vote.
He seconded before the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what I actually got. Apologize, okay, I'll call for a vote then. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. My, sorry, my mistake. I would like to see what all we have for our $20,000 investment paperwork wise.
Well, and also, we dealt with the accountant who's at the same one of the hospital, he was a...
What's your vehicle of execution? A letter from us?
Dawn, are you able to pull up the engagement letter?
I don't think so, because I think he sent it, so I'll have to, because I don't think it's something he did for him, I think he sent us an engagement letter, so I'll have to pull that up.
And what's our vehicle for executing this motion, a letter to him?
Well, he says in here, it says, Dear Jennifer, pursuant to your direction, I enclose our final statement for services rendered with reference to the transition of Lincoln Park Manor operations. I would direct you to paragraph nine of the engagement letter with reference to information that's been provided to us. It has been a pleasure working with you.
Do we need a written letter signed by us stating we're terminating?
Well, obviously, she told him, because that's what that...
Yeah, but verbal, I don't like verbal statements over the phone.
I agree, I agree.
What do you see, something writing?
I probably don't have a copy of that, because we would probably just provide it to copy in executive session. This, I would just like to say, this is the attorney that the committee chose under the direction of Mr. Granzo.
Well, he's the hospital attorney.
Right, so we may have something to say about that to the board.
Well, he probably thought he was, Mr., to be fair, Mr. Granzo, he is a, Mr. Hay is knowledgeable on...
Commission room.
Mr. Hay is knowledgeable on hospitals, nursing homes, that's his...
What kind of knowledge have we acquired for our $20,000?
Well, maybe he didn't provide us with that information, but at the time, Mr. Granzo, I'm just saying, I know what you're...
Well, I also noticed in the hospital financials that it cost the hospital nearly $1,500 for Mr. Hay to tell him, to tell Mr. Granzo that he had to comply with Open Records Act.
Yeah, I know.
So let's address that with the board, I mean...
In preparation for the board, there's a booklet put out by LUTZ, that lists the responsibilities and stuff for hospital boards.
Where did you find that?
Reach your top.
Is that particular to Kansas?
No, it's particular to all hospital boards.
Directed and appointed, or...
Read the first paragraph and see what it says.
The hospital board director's role is to serve as the governing body of the hospital. The board is responsible for oversight of the hospital. Board responsibilities include making strategic decisions for the hospital, hiring and monitoring effective CEO, ensuring the hospital's providing quality care, overseeing the hospital's financial well-being, staying educated in healthcare industry news and best practices, being representative of the hospital and the community. The board is not involved in the day-to-day operations of the hospital, the daily operation is up to the management. The board should develop and review an overall mission and strategy, establish the hospital's mission statement, and serve as a guide for long-term goals and policies for the hospital. Part of this responsibility is making more strategic, major strategic decisions on behalf of the hospital in this ever-changing healthcare industry. Setting this overall tone will impact the policies, procedures, and decisions made by management.
That's generally your accepted handbook for hospital boards, and it covers both the, what's our, not emergency care, critical care hospitals and the big ones both, but it's very specific about what they should have been doing all along, and what they, one of the things that they have to do is verify the education and efficiency of people that they hire, for example, doctors and PMs. That's the board's job, is to verify that they are what they're supposed to be, among other things.
Though, there's an interesting sentence, board members should be in close communication with the CEO when hiring and reappointing providers. I think right there is one of the issues, because...
That's exactly right.
While I have heard all good things about the new providers, this is not a judgment on their ability to provide care. It's the fact that we replaced one provider with two.
And none of them...
Drastically increasing the expenses.
They weren't vetted.
Not by the board.
That's right, that's what I'm saying.
Not by the board, yeah.
They weren't vetted by the board.
Yeah, I agree. Let's move on to the minutes, and we will...
I have finished.
Dawn, help somebody pull up that engagement letter.
I'll have to go find it, so...
Alexis, one second, are we finished with the Mr. Hay issue? Are we gonna write a letter and sign it?
I want to read this, what he points to is paragraph nine.
Okay.
And we, like I said, when we first established a board to address Lincoln Park Manor, it was Mr. Aljo Wallace, Lincoln Economic Development, the hospital board, Jennifer O'Hare, Dawn, I think you were on there, and who am I missing? I feel like I'm missing someone. And that was the board. Then, Mr. Wallace said he didn't want to do it anymore, so they put me on there, and that is about the time that we were looking to hire attorneys. We only talked to two, one was this one, and the other one was one I found out of, I think they were in Topeka. And they chose this one at the request of Mr. Granzo because of his affiliation with the hospital. The board only talked to him about one time, and then he started going into executive sessions with the commission. So we would have Jennifer O'Hare and Mr. Hay come to a commission meeting, have a closed session, have them on telephone conference, which, there answers your question about closed sessions on telephone conference, because we're doing it with an attorney out of Topeka, but since that time, we have not received anything in, on paper from Mr. Hay as far as anything. I mean, bills and...
But didn't we request anything?
We had asked him several questions and gotten the same answer every time, which was inconclusive. The next step that he was going to do was prepare to file against them for an eviction, which, that was one of the last things that we had kind of talked about, depending on the outcome. Other than that, we never really got any substantial information. There was, there were a couple suggestions for potential new management companies, but that wasn't what we hired him to do.
So we need to write a letter, subject to being compatible with his letter to us, thanking him for his service and informing him it no longer being required. Please send us all the information that you generated for Lincoln Park Manor. That was the gist of the motion, I think.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
Good job.
Okay, that's fine. Also, while we're on this topic, several weeks ago, we instructed our attorney to provide a suit against Mr. Grace, I don't know where we're at with that situation, I guess...
Well, this is what we paid $720 for, for an email with O'Hare regarding action against J. Grace Corporation, and for him to review the file and review Kdad's forms and regulations. So that happened on 8/22, and we never got any of that information, and it's been a month. So where is that information that we paid $720 for, I would like to know?
Well, we need to have...
So I move to require Attorney Jennifer O'Hare to provide the Lincoln County Commission with a comprehensive compilation of all of her documents and communication with Mr. Hay concerning Lincoln Park Manor.
You need to, when are you gonna do that?
Drop dead date, September 30th.
It's only a week?
It shouldn't take more than a week to just print all that out.
Give me provide documents to us.
Yes, I want all, we paid 700, we're paying, if you're paying this bill, you're paying $720. Well, do we want to second this for discussion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second it for discussion. We paid $720 for Mr. Hay on September, on August 22nd, and today is the 23rd of September, isn't it? So a month ago, we pay, he is billing us for his day, $720, that it says, review file, review Kdad's forms and regulations, and email Jennifer O'Hare regarding action against J. Grace Corporation. So those, that review that he did, what, we, that was a month ago that he reviewed this, and we haven't heard a thing from him. I would like to know...
Well, we need a request, our county attorney to come to a meeting here.
Oh, she did.
I'll make...
Next Monday.
Is she on the agenda?
No, I said that's your, that's in your motion.
No, it wasn't in her motion, but that's okay.
I thought she had that.
Well, let's make a separate motion for the meeting attendants. Sorry.
What's the separate motion?
I will make a separate motion for meeting attendants. What this motion is for is for any documentation and correspondence between Jennifer O'Hare, who is the county attorney who was assigned to this on the committee, and everything that she has regarding her correspondence with Mr. Hay.
Well, that, isn't that the motion you made?
And it's been seconded.
Yeah, and I seconded that.
So the discussion is, you'd also like to have her come to a meeting, right?
Yes.
Because then she can explain to us...
She could bring this stuff, and have a meeting too, we go executive session, we have to, yeah, I agree with that, or what's...
Okay, I'll call for a vote on this original motion. Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And we want to put it on the agenda, hopefully, yeah?
Yes.
Next week, you know, and go over all this stuff.
If she's unavailable on the 30th, what would you, what would you like me to...
Well, check her schedule by when she is available next week.
Yeah, ask her when she is available, maybe we can have a special meeting just with us and...
She's got a lot of stuff going on, she's up in...
So if we don't need a motion for that, we can just send her?
Well, isn't she in the middle of this sale, tax sale stuff?
She's up in Flag County right now, been in Judge Kim's court all day today.
Okay, is that it then for that topic?
Yeah, as long as we can schedule her some time to go with this, that's what I'll look at.
I read the minutes, that's provided by Ms. Dawn, and I find them acceptable, and I move that we accept them as prepared on the 16th of September.
Is there any further discussion? I, this isn't for the correction of the minutes, but just now that I'm looking at them on paper, Dawn, were you going to notify the courthouse of next Monday, or would you like us to send out an email, or...
Either or, I haven't done it yet, just because I haven't...
Okay, just out of...
Been here. Randy, you seconded it, right?
Yes.
There was one thing I wanted to look for.
Are we getting a call for a little?
Yes, I just wanted to look for one thing.
Oh, okay.
Um, the one thing that I wanted in there, I just glanced, it was an email, so I don't see it. We had requested that Mr. McKay contact...
Susan Marshall.
Susan Marshall, thank you.
I haven't yet, but I...
Okay, but you know that that's in there, Susan Marshall?
Yeah.
Because she was there during the attorney general opinion issuance about Wilson Lake Estates, that was one thing. We also requested that he contact Schwab Eaton and stop the process of their engineering assessment for the landslide, so could we please add those to the minutes?
True. That'd be in the amendment?
Yeah, I'm one second. Doesn't want to...
I guess that would be, if you would have to amend your motion to say, as corrected, and then just let her correct what I mentioned. Those are the two things that I thought were crucial.
I must have them up upstairs, hang on.
Well, she's looking, Brendan, did you know that in the vault, they've got the original dockers creating all that stuff? The rolling and all that?
Yes, I've already been in there once, last time.
We had a constituent that showed up and requested we consider reproducing those sometime, because those probably, and the one you have over in the highway department, probably ought to be put down on a salt mine.
Yeah, oh, there was one of the papers we looked up, was 1873, 1840? And I don't think that vault is fire, firesafe is left out.
Well, they probably ought to be here.
Oh, road records, yes.
None of the vaults are fire safe?
But they probably ought to be in a controlled environment.
Hey, Dawn, can you close out on my minutes on my computer, please? Okay, thanks. When they installed lights in them, the drill holes in them, that made them non-fire safe.
Okay, so...
Okay, so you want me to add?
Please add that the commission instructed the director of the highway department to contact Susan Marshall regarding Wilson Lake Estates, attorney general opinion, and Schwab Eaton to stop engineering services for the landslide there. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, so, move to amend your motion then?
Your minute says corrected now.
Okay, as corrected, instead of as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, so those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now for this bill, we need to decide where we'll pay it from. I would suggest that we pay it out of line item for the nursing home budget.
Yeah, that's nursing home stuff.
Yeah.
And my question is, Dawn, did we pay the last bill to Folsom Sievkin out of that line item?
I believe so.
Okay.
I will have to look.
We're all agreeants there?
Yeah. That always sounded new, did you?
No, no, that's fine.
While we're talking nursing homes, can I, I went, Friday, the technician or the inspector for this GH paste came from Kansas City, inspected fire doors, and I was there along with the administrator, and we went from door to door, and he says, a lot of, you know, I was thinking replace a lot of this stuff, he only thinks it's all one door that really needs replacing because it had been damaged and was getting through, through the coating.
Which one is that?
It's one right when you walk, I don't know if you come in, it's one of those right by the first, on the east side, right where it splits.
Like between the big hall and the north and south?
Yeah, where the kitchen is, and then if you come back west, right there where it splits north and south.
By the nursing station?
Yeah, and the next, the next doors, then, to the east west, there's a door, right there, one of them is damaged, and he thought that one, just one door out of two would need to be replaced. The other ones can be adjusted, they have, you have a crack like this.
Do they do that?
Yeah, they can do all that, yeah, and they can adjust them and cracks, so I think this price, he's gonna give us...
Awesome.
He's gonna give us a new quote, send it to the commission here, I think, I don't have him send me a personal copy, but send it to the, or to Dawn or the test commission mail, he's gonna give us a bid, and then go from there, I said that'd be great, and he was, seemed a really nice guy, and, but they can adjust some of them, and they have, they can put in little spacers.
Yeah.
They're all fired, they're all certified by, so that they'd be inspectionally approved.
Perfect.
They put stickers, yeah, so I think it's gonna, that 27,000 we originally had for a quote?
It would be that.
I think it should be, it should be quite less, according to this guy, of course, you know, I don't know yet how much, but it would, it'd only be replacing one and fixing the others to comply with, you know, the code and, for the inspector. So that went well, so, and then he's gonna get back to us with paperwork on it. Well, first he's gonna say his inspection report we'll get, and then a...
With each door and what it needs.
Yeah, yeah, he'll have a...
The one that he wants replaced.
Right, yeah, he'll have an inspection report receipt, Charlie, which door?
So, then did you ask him, does he need to have the fire marshal come once he's done? Is that kind of how the process works, have the?
Why ask him that too? I said, yeah, then, when you, I fixed them, I don't remember what he said, it's a good question. Well, they, they, the fire marshals kinda come when they want, they just kinda show up. I don't know though if we do a rebuild or a modification, if we ask them to come in and certify them, then, I, maybe there is a process. I didn't really ask that.
I would assume that's kind of part of the.
Yeah.
Situation is.
To get them certified that they, that they'll pass.
Right.
Right, and I didn't really ask that.
That would probably be my stipulation, if you're gonna do it.
Well, upon us paying.
Yeah.
For them, he's gonna make sure, I think, they're certified.
Because I think we pay for an inspection every year, don't we, Dawn? We pay for.
He says he comes every year.
I don't.
Well, he said he will.
I don't think we pay for an inspection, I think the state fire marshal, I think you pay a company to come in and do an inspection of your extinguisher system, but the state fire marshal shows up as part of their certification.
They could show up anytime, a fire marshal, and then if they find something, they could write you, fine. But, uh, anyway, that's where we're at, so hopefully we'll get an inspection report, and then he'll give us a, a quote on fixing stuff, and if we like it, we don't have to go with them to fix them, but I think they're pretty reputable, and there's not too many people around that do that type of work.
Okay.
But anyway, that's where I was at.
That sounds good.
Yeah, sounded pretty good.
Thank you for doing that.
Hopefully we'll be blessed with this twenty-six thousand we had.
Well, that was, I know that that was a quote to replace all of them, just point blank, because one of the things that they said, and that's interesting, is this a new person for the?
Well, I don't know, he's in this, he's one of their inspectors.
It's interesting because they said that, well, they wouldn't, they weren't gonna be able to go in and replace all of them without having the fire rating for the ceiling and the walls connected to each opening for the doors that they were replacing, so.
Well, and also, he said, they have a whole new department that DH Pace, that they have just inspectors, that, that's all they do, that's what he does.
Good.
But then, so, he says now, he said, yeah, these doors could be fixed, you know, like if that door's got a crash. Yeah, you don't have to take the whole door out, you could put a, you could adjust them, and they can, then they recertify them, they have a criteria. They go by to certify them, you know, you gotta pass certain tests and stuff.
Thank you for meeting with him.
No problem.
I recommend that you send those results to Grace Team, Inc., to show that we are proceeding on the fire doors, because as I understand Mr. Grace's comment, that as soon as he received indication that we were fixing those fire doors, he would pay his rent.
I emailed John Grace last week saying we were gonna have the inspection, and John Grace, the administrator, was there with us going through it, and the inspector. But when we get the inspection report, I will tell, I'll send him one, or I'll ask if the administrator, they'll get one too, I think. And I wanna make sure Grace, Grace gets that, yeah, you're right, Jim, so that Grace knows we're working on them and fixing them, and that's like you said, that was one of his criteria that was, he said that he wasn't.
He didn't say they had to be finished, he just said that we had to be doing it.
We're in process, yeah.
So, as long as he knows that, maybe he'll phone you up.
Okay, and if he doesn't?
Then we are still stuck with a lawsuit.
Well, we're going to, uh, give him that report, and then when we fix it, then if he does it, yeah, well, then, then we can proceed, anyway.
Okay.
My opinion, anyway.
Um, correspondence from Highway Director says that he's doing three interviews tomorrow for Office Manager.
That's right, you emailed me back, didn't you? Glad you brought that up, I'm glad for you.
Well, I'm just opening our email now. I don't, I don't do, I don't mess with this at home because I feel like it's for us at the beginning, so. I'm just opening it now.
Well, Brendan was gonna do it last week, but we wanted to have Dawn involved, right?
It says that she, he sent it to her.
Right.
Yeah, probably schedule it, bring out Dawn, about her availability.
Right.
So, then, we also got correspondence from the county clerk that says, and it's just including us, so we know what was sent out. This is your weekly reminder to go into the time clock system and clean up your employees' mispunctures and fix any errors that you may have regarding their time. This month has a very short window to get payroll submitted to the bank, and it technically should be there by our contract, uh, by noon on September twenty-sixth. And with the pay period ending September twenty-fifth, it makes my job extremely difficult. My goal is to have it there Thursday afternoon. If it does not make it there by Thursday, employees will not get paid on September thirtieth. No excuses accepted, you need to do your part and get everything entered or corrected. Don't wait until September, September twenty-fifth, do it today. Makes sense, okay. Let's see, and then we, I have a meeting reminder from September seventeenth last week, which is when we had asked, um, we asked Mr. McQueen to represent us for the flood plain mapping, so I assume that it was just a reminder on there.
Has he went to that yet, or?
Well, it was last week, so I would assume.
Maybe we should ask him if he heard anything, you know.
And then we also got our two thousand and eighteen real estate appraisal and sales ratio pursuant to the requirements of KSA seventy-nine fourteen eighty-nine. And that is from the Ratio Study Section Division of Property Valuation in Topeka Department of Revenue. So, there are some documents in here, and I'm a little concerned, because will this just kick out Dawn or Brendan, maybe, you know, because you've been working with it too. Will this email just kick out the old ones? I mean, if I want to save this because it has downloaded.
Not until you delete it on here, because you're not downloading it into, um, Outlook. Outlook is what tells it to delete off the server after fourteen days.
Okay.
But it keeps it in Outlook.
But that won't do that, because I don't have it set up on my computer. Okay.
Outlook will just remove, if you have it set up for after fourteen days, it'll remove it off your server after fourteen days, but it'll keep it saved, copied, in Outlook, it won't be deleted.
How long do they keep them?
Outlook keeps it for after, tell you to leave it. I have to have it set up so that automatically it deletes it off the web server, regardless of how it goes up.
We gotta save it on a web server, like a cloud, you know, just on our own personal hard drive, so if that thing cracks.
The hard drive's already backed up.
Well, that's fine.
But I, what I'm saying is, I'm using my personal, personal computer to open this email, so I don't have Outlook, I'm not, there's no.
You're not downloading it.
Right, I'm not, I'm just accessing the online portal here to open this, so I'm gonna have a limited capacity of storage, is what I'm saying, so eventually we'll just delete this stuff. We did have some correspondence that we didn't, uh, talk about in the open session last week, so there is a, there's an ongoing dispute over access to the, the board information, the hospital, yeah. And, and there was, we got some correspondence back and forth, there, Mr. Gersman, um, was attempting to get the information before the meeting, and it, basically, he had put a request in writing to Mr. Granzo about doing this, and Mr. Granzo had charged him money in the past to get some of the information, and, um, basically, the dispute is seventy-five forty-three eighteen three D, and it's saying that they have, the board has to make their agenda available, and they have to make that an open record, and, and it has to be available without all of this back and forth, you know, trying to say that you, you don't have access to it, or that it has to be paid for. There's a, there are some long emails back and forth, and I guess what I'm saying is, as the commission, we need to make it clear to the hospital board that they need to provide this. It isn't a closed document, they need to just communicate openly with whoever wants to see it. I mean, they're appointed by us. They're open records unless it has something to do with a patient and HIPAA information, or something private about an employee. But other than that, I mean, some employees were shocked to find out that their wages are open records. There's not one employee that's an employee of the hospital that can have a hidden wage or compensation, and their contracts are also open records. So, I would like to suggest that we just go ahead and make some of our own coro requests to Mr. Granzo. Um, he's only there for a few more months, he has all of this information, I think, uh, Tanya, is, is, do you say it sites?
Sites.
She had that too. I don't think she has any intention of leaving, I know of, but I would like to suggest that the board just go ahead, get some of this information so that we know that we have it, and we stop hearing about all this quarreling from people trying to get some of these open records. They're not closed records, and there seems to be a very short-sighted problem with the board, not understanding, I mean, and I've listened to the meetings, and I've seen some of them. There will be people sitting there and, and they don't wanna, they don't wanna share the information that's on the paper. Even, I've seen you sit at the table and be skipped with some of the handouts, the, the administrator goes around and hands out all the information, and skips people and goes to the next person. It's just very, we need to get it to stop, it just needs to stop.
It's secretive about the information, and I don't know, yeah, a lot of times I have handouts, I won't give them to, well, I guess I'm not officially on the board, so they don't, but.
But if it's happening.
I'm a representative of the board, and we, we, uh, like you say, we appoint them.
Well, say, disperse it, it's an open record.
That's right, and I think.
Unless it's like.
I brought that up Tuesday night, I said.
A work-in product, but then if it's a work-in product, it really should be going to executive session.
Exactly.
Well, and if it's proprietary information, like if they're negotiating with hiring a new doctor, that, that, that doesn't need to be, that's private, that's executive session.
Is you close the session, and then you disperse the information, and so as an individual, when you get that information in executive session, it's not open. But when they're sitting there at the table, and they all get a packet, and they all talk about whatever's in front of them, anybody, for example, right now, if anyone in this particular room wanted to be able to see these records, they're there and available.
And I'll really, let's say this packet, I get, here's a packet right here, and you give them, send it, Commissioner's one, and I go, and it just really shows a financial for the last month, what bills they got, what they paid, and, uh, it's not that secretive, I don't know what, probably, it's a lot of money. They spent six hundred thousand dollars last month on accounts payable, you know, so, I think they're afraid the public will find out how expensive the hospital is, and I'm not putting hospital down, I know I say that, some people say, oh, you hate hospitals. No, I don't, I like hospitals, but it's, we gotta be honest, what it costs. They gave seven point two million dollars this last year revenue, that's what they take in, but they paid eight point five million in expenses. That's the facts, I'm not saying good or bad or indifferent, those are facts, and that's all I wanna point out, and the public should know that. I don't, but they're, I think they're afraid because they have a bigger budget than us commissioners do.
Right.
And see, I don't think the public knows that.
Right.
And they're afraid if that comes out to the public, all of a sudden the public's gonna start hammering that one, and I hope they don't, I like hospital, I wanna make it work. But we should be honest about the data and the facts.
Well, we meet with the hospital board by Wednesday.
I know, but we need to know primarily how we are viewing this situation. Two things I'd like to point out, number one, like Dawn said, if the information is being dispersed in the open meeting, it's accessible, period. There, there's none of this, well, I'm gonna charge you all this stuff just to look at it. You don't charge for someone to be able to look at it. And if someone really wants a copy, then charge a reasonable amount.
What I was gonna do, I get a packet, like now it comes in Monday, I came in Monday afternoon to get it from Dawn, had it here in the mail. All, what I was just gonna do is make copies, about ten, five copies, I'll go to my own personal copyright and go, I can get it. No, and I will just hand them out, because their issue is, well, it cost me buck a page, way back here, and it costs like forty bucks a packet. Well, that's BS, you know, that's.
There's a statute that says it has to be a reasonable charge.
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Well, I'll make, I'll just make copies, I'll just hand it out to whoever wants it, then if they don't like it, that's too bad.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, when I went to the open meetings, meeting in Topeka, I think that they offer to come to locations to do open records. We have a venue in the Finch Theater, although I feel like that's a dual whatever, but we do have a projector down there and comfortable seating. How would you guys feel about sponsoring?
I would love it.
I, I agree with that, too.
Uh, what do we call that? Training?
Yes, and I would say that we make it normally.
Mandatory.
Yes, you could do that, you could tell your employees to come too, but then we could open it up to other locations, and I think that's normally what they do, is kinda do some regional meetings. So, maybe we offer the venue for them to come in.
So, like any five oh one C three that, I mean, they don't have to have open records necessarily, but they have to be open and transparent with their government funding portion of it. So, that'd be great. We had this issue.
Coma and core both.
Yes, they kinda do.
Do they do combined?
It's about a three-hour.
Who's, who does that training, huh?
The Attorney General's office.
Oh, good.
I mean, you can go to it, I went to it in Topeka just because I felt like I was being overwhelmed, and I wasn't a hundred percent sure, yeah.
Yeah, good, well, I think, yes, that'd be great, I mean.
That would be great.
Would you make a motion?
Yes.
Well, let me call them first and see if they still have that out there, and then if we do, then, yeah.
What's the cost to rent the Finch?
It's seventy-five dollars, and then it's ten dollars an hour that we run the projection equipment.
Okay, I think that'd be a good place, too.
Yeah, I think so, too.
What's the seating in there?
Hundred and fifty-nine.
That's perfect.
Yeah, plenty of people.
Perfect, yes, great suggestion. Okay, the second thing that I wanted to point out is the hospital board, like, as you gave us some information earlier, is ultimately responsible, so I think that's what we're trying to portray to them when we have our meeting with them. They have to take responsibility for this. When everyone's sitting around the table, and people are asking to look at the documentation, it's their responsibility to give it out, not them to look at the administrator they hired and say, hmm, you know, I think they don't understand that their role is to be.
Yeah.
They're appointed there to make the decision.
Well, I'd like to put together something from Lutz, ten or fifteen minutes on, these are your roles, and this is what you're supposed to be doing. Because I don't know that they've ever had that, they've never been brought out.
I will say, I think in general, they have this, it seems secretive, I think that thought process comes from the fact that, oh, well, we're dealing with the hospital, we're dealing with people's medical records, but they are not physically dealing with any of that. That is all housed in filing cabinets in the nursing stations and with the doctors. That has nothing to do with what the board is talking about financially, and.
That's, you're right. They're, they're dealing with financial issues, and hiring maybe administrators and doctors.
Right.
And then also, how much, what, what we're gonna spend, and what we're gonna hopefully try to get in for income. That's their job, and that's kind of our job here as commissioners also.
Well, they got a lot more job, they've got to interface with the community, make sure the community understands what they're doing. They hire and fire the administrator, they supervise his hiring and firing of, of, uh, people that work at the hospital. They are supposed to vet the people that he hires. It's all laid out in great detail, and I don't think anybody's ever told them that, I think it's time that they got told.
But maybe part of that is when they do come on, just like we appointed two new people here, like Mr.
We don't give them an orientation, that's our fault.
Well, Mr. Weber disappointed, I don't think they know what their job is, and maybe we should, I don't know if that's the hospital's job, and the existing board's job, or us commissioners' job.
Somebody needs to educate them.
If we harm, tell them what's wrong.
I just wanna know, is the meeting six P M. with the hospital board here, is it an open meeting?
Yes.
Will there be a way for taxpayers to ask questions?
Sure, I can make that happen.
Well, if you.
I've been asking a question to the hospital and not had any answer in regards to why they purchased houses to tear down.
This is not, this, you need to go to the hospital board to ask that.
I've asked the hospital itself to.
I don't think the hospital has purchased houses, that's a foundation.
It's a separate entity.
That's the, the foundation.
But that's, that's not what we wanna accomplish on our meeting with the hospital board.
I just didn't under, I don't, and I don't think many of you.
But the foundation, Cindy owns those houses.
I understand that, and I don't think that, what I'm trying to say is that most of the community doesn't understand the differences.
You're right, I've had that question myself.
Clear, and the foundation needs to be responsible to some.
But they're a nonprofit, too, and they can, they're not responsible for nobody, they just donate if they want to to the hospital.
But I think that's a big miscommunication, but it's a miscommunication, because I think what I found out, just talking to people, no one knew that when you're donating to the foundation, you're not donating to the hospital necessarily. So, there's a, there's a discrepancy there, because people don't know they have the option. If you want to just directly donate to the hospital, and I didn't even know this until a few weeks ago, you can, you can just walk into the hospital and cut a check, you can give it to the board at the board meeting. I didn't realize that. I personally thought the whole purpose of creating the foundation was so that they were housing that donation money to be an influx for the hospital at any given time for any particular purpose, but that's not apparently true, and I have yet to see the bylaws for the, for the foundation. But the foundation apparently donates to any of the various healthcare operations or faculties within the county. So, they could donate to the, the health department if they wanted to.
The nursing home.
The nursing home they could too, yeah, so when they take in donations, it's either specifically assigned by the donor, you know, I want this to purchase a an X-ray machine for the hospital, you know, and then they try to abide by the wishes of the donor. Or they just take in general donations and do what they want, which I think that's the question, why have they purchased houses? And then how does that pertain to the county owning the hospital land, and then potentially the hospital expanding on its own with a separate parcel to expand its operation, but how does that affect the county, and then if that creates a larger deficit in their budget, we really need to be concerned about that.
Because if it's a five oh one C, C three, there's an idea of the public, uh, being accessible to that.
Not necessarily.
Well, it depends on what kind of five oh one three C they have, but I can't get any information from them whatsoever.
Okay, so they, if they're a five oh one C three, if they do not have any government affiliation, such as tax income, tax revenue income for themselves, or appointment by a governing body, then they're not accessible. But that, but it's interesting, because like you said, that creates the illusion that they're getting money for the county-owned hospital, but really, they're just their own independent organization, and if people wanna donate to the hospital, they can go straight to the hospital, they don't have to use. But that, but it's interesting because like you said, that creates the illusion that they're getting money for the county-owned hospital, but really, they're just their own independent organization, and if people wanna donate to the hospital, they can go straight to the hospital, they don't have to use the foundation, and I think there's where some of the confusion is.
And how they're making their decisions about the hospital.
Well, yeah, we have, we have no say on that, so that's.
Yeah, we don't, that's a private deal.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is not well understood, because I just recently was digging up some information on that, wondering, how does that work? I was under the impression, like you said, they were affiliated with the hospital, they're all about generating revenue for the hospital through donations, and that they were somehow, that they're not open records or anything like that. So, um, and I would just say on that note, before we go into this meeting on Wednesday, we should all be aware that the financials show that the majority of the loss that's being accrued every year is with the clinics, both clinics. So if the hospital is somewhat maintaining a sustainable bottom line and the clinics themselves are generating the losses, my concern is the future plan to expand the clinics, that's, that's all I'm saying, I don't, you know, that's just where I'm going with that. I don't understand that plan and it kinda ties into the foundation because the foundation is purchasing this land for the hospital to expand the clinics, which is the largest portion of their deficit.
Yeah.
So I don't know that the board even, maybe the board doesn't even know that.
What, what, I, I knew it, we've been down there, I knew they had this, they were gonna build a new clinic or planned to.
But why are they building a new clinic if the clinic is where the majority of the loss is being?
That's because that board doesn't understand and hasn't been involved in that planning, and that's one of the things we want to impress upon them when we meet.
So who's planning that, is the foundation planning this expansion with just?
That's my question.
But so far, two purchases have been made and acquired of, of joint, not, it's not conjoining, I think one is conjoining land, the other one's across the street, and so if the foundation is making these plans for future expansion for the hospital, who on the hospital board is? I only know of one person that's sitting on both boards.
That's what I'm saying, is the hospital board should be involved in that, that's their job and they haven't been involved, and that's one of the things we'd like to correct.
Okay.
Visually.
Okay, anything else, those are the topics I wanted to make sure we, we start to address on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Randy and I'd like to have a secret meeting before Brendan takes over.
Oh, we will.
What time is it?
I don't remember.
Five till.
It's five till, okay, I, I will. Recess us for, I have ten fifty-three, so I'll recess us for seven minutes.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Oh.
I'm fine for now.
Have another.
I'm gonna pause these.
Sure.
No communication.
That's politics.
No, that's, it's, that's.
Technically illegal.
It's, it's technically illegal.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying.
That is how they do it, you're right.
That's politics.
Politics and illegals synonymous, you know.
Well, ethics and morals border there, a lot of times it's a thin line, what's ethical and what isn't, what's moral and what isn't. You look at Washington now, they're so blatantly corrupt.
Well, I'm gonna get on my soapbox and say, we were never designed to have a government that creates laws to control your behavior, the, the laws weren't supposed to be created to stop others from infringing on others. Or from the government itself infringing on the individual, we've totally distorted that concept.
They got too much power.
Oh, my goodness, if we're not supposed to make laws on how you can spend and what you can spend and who can produce, and that's crazy. It's supposed to be, if you're producing something that's harming people, then you get in trouble by the law, not, you can only produce X amount or Y amount or, it's backward, we have it totally backward.
For just a comment, I asked the prosecutor attorney, if she's gonna run for reelection, she says no, I says, so when attorney was to pursue the position of prosecutor attorney, I says, the first thing on your agenda would be, you will arrest and prosecute. Prosecute.
Hopefully not. But that's been done too.
But prosecute corrupt, crooked, elected and government officials, will I get elected, she says, oh, my God, yes, she said, you might not live too long, but you'd get elected.
So that's what we need to do.
But you can't do that because the conflict of interest is you actually serve as those elected officials, um, defense attorney.
Can the grand jury do it?
No, if that goes to like a state investigation is what happens, you have to turn them in as elected officials and then they have to be investigated on the state level, you can't have your local, your local attorney is actually, like, automatically serves as this board's defense, she can't prosecute this board, yeah, no, I'm serious, that's honestly serious.
That isn't what she told me, she said, we are still state officials, we are officers of the law in court, so there you go again.
Now, now, they can, they can see the evidence and pass it on to another prosecutor, yes, you can be prosecuted by someone else the same, they turn it over to, but not by themselves.
If the sheriff does something wrong, who can arrest the sheriff?
The Attorney General.
A higher law, a higher law enforcement officer.
Nope.
No.
The Attorney General.
Nope. It's the same in all fifty states too, the county coroner, he is an elected official, he's not one subject to law enforcement, and that's the only person can arrest a sheriff, it's in the state law, it's in every fifty state law.
Know who the sheriff is if the sheriff resigns?
You. Is that why you're packing iron?
Is that the county clerk, is it, really?
Yep.
Why, please tell me why.
We better be careful.
It doesn't even make sense.
We don't wanna tee you off, I know.
And if you, and if you bring coyote ears to you, she'll give you a five dollar bill.
She's supposed to.
We used to do that when I was a kid.
Please don't.
We used to bring, we used to bring, shoot coyotes and cut the ears off and bring them to, get paid five bucks, remember that, Jim?
Well, I remember.
You remember, do you know how it was?
Yeah.
Used to, it's rabbits too.
Yeah, we did it.
Jackrabbits.
Yeah.
You had to have proof of they shot them, Dawn, so there's the ears are approved, that's what, that's, I did that, we did that.
Okay, I did not know that until about ten years ago, one of the new clerks had somebody walk in with their bloody ears and drop them on the counter, and they were like, what is this all about? They didn't even have them in a bag, they literally just dropped the bloody ears on their counter.
You probably thought they were doing some weird, uh, threatening you or something.
Was it Halloween?
Well, no, it wasn't me, it was another county, and so this new clerk, she like sent out an email and she's like, what do you guys know about this, he's claiming, cause you know, that's how you find out things.
Yeah, that's true, we used to do that when I was a kid, I think they quit doing that though, didn't they, with the ears?
Still statues.
Really? Could, I don't know, anybody does anymore, but yeah, we did when we were young.
And they used to put them all in a container so they'd ferment and be together, and so nobody, then they'd bring them to the clerk's office and she'd open it up or he'd put it back down and say, well, how many are in there, and so, you know, you could have just two in there, but you'd say ten.
That's just gross. Very gross.
Very, very gross. Well, there's so many county clerk.
I, you know, Morton does intend to do that, it's, he's, now that he's a grown up, he has less free time.
I give him about my D two thirteen.
I don't, I don't like.
Did you have to?
I don't like the dog.
You don't like getting dirty?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't like the dog.
Well, I know, you gotta, big care.
Brendan, I think we're ready for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Shave his head, put the metal cap on it.
Get him on, that way I can't pull it out.
Matt, did you turn the things back?
I did.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Bell's here too, and you, we'll talk to him a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, you know what, let's just do that first, Mr. Bell, would you like to?
David, you wanna come up now?
Yes.
Why don't you, then we, we can dress, then you don't have to wait around.
Hi, morning, my name's David Bell, I'm a sixth generation.
Stay up here, stay up here.
From this area, uh.
Come on up.
I have a, I have a question, I guess if there's, uh, if there can be any progress made to a county grape's facility on East Jagger, that's been closed for two, three years.
Brendan, I think I talked, talked to you about David, had was here a year ago or so, or not a year ago, but requested that, he was wanting a low water broad crossing.
Well, see if we can.
Probably.
See if we can do something, I don't know if a, a low water.
That may not be feasible, but something there.
Crossing.
I, I told you, but I think I gave your number to him, right?
Have you met? This is Brendan McKay, he's our new director.
Yeah, Brendan, this David, I was gonna have you meet with him. He has a situation out southeast of Lincoln, uh, well, you can tell him, David, your situation.
It, it, it's a place where a creek, um, goes across the road and the old wooden bridge is dilapidated and has been closed, and, uh, I want, I want to remind everyone that, uh, this road may not look like much on a map, but there's a lot of commerce that goes, used to go up and down this road, like I said, I, I grew up in this area, went up and down it every day to school. When it was dry, uh, a lot of Lincoln business can go that way, a lot of Beverly business can come this way, you know, Crop Service at Beverly, the fertilizer place, they, they really liked to travel this road because it was flat, it was wide, and it wasn't dangerous if you got off on the sides. You know, and, and they travel clear to Russell County doing operations, uh. Wondering if there is a, a, a cheaper way than spending money on a full-scale bridge to, uh, make something work, I have, uh. I've called the, the place in Oklahoma where you get railroad cars for, for giant culverts, and, uh, I think something like that would be a, a great idea. Uh, I, I'm not, I, I have the property just downstream of this, uh, and, and the upstream landowner is, is in quite agreement with me also in terms of a culvert might work, a, a railroad car might work for a culvert. I'm, I'm not really in favor of like a low water crossing because our, our creek banks are not real high, and, um, in years past, there was a low water crossing put in just for the half mile downstream. And is one of those places where the creek banks weren't real high and for thirty years, the graders kinda just kept grading it down and down, before we knew it, the water was not going in the creek.
Coming out of the.
It was go, no, it is going down the road, and then it marched the new path around, and so that, that's, I don't believe a, a low water crossing is necessarily the right, um, right approach to be trying to solve this problem. I'm, I'm wondering about just a, a dry culvert, and, uh, like I said, I have, uh, I have mentioned to the board that I would be interested in, uh, taking out the old wooden bridge and, and if, uh, I can, uh, meet the specs on putting this culvert in, I could probably put the culvert in.
And it's East Jaguar, and what's the street crossing that?
And there is not a street crossing.
Oh, yes.
Between.
Two Forty and two Fifty.
Okay.
No, no, yes, two Forty, two Fifty.
CBA has some seven foot, uh, Anhydras tanks that they're trying to unload for about thirty-five hundred dollars a piece, Morgan Krueger's cut the ends out of one, I mean, he says it works just fine for a.
I don't know, a seven footer wouldn't be big.
Yeah, I'm just passing that.
Yeah, yes, I, I very much wear that and, and, uh, I had a ten foot tube in there, it wasn't near heavy enough and I never did finish the project on, on my property, and I never even put dirt in it. But we're kinda concerned after seeing the water level and the, and the different rains, that maybe a ten foot wouldn't quite be big.
And here's some of those culverts, this place, Brendan, I can show you, where you have the, they actually have, use flat cars for bridges too.
You use flat cars.
That's that place down in Oklahoma, and they, they have those big culverts too like those.
Yep.
Well, they, well, those are, they have round ones, but they have square ones too here.
Yeah, it just, it's using old chipping.
Right, anyway, this is a place I have, they're into flat cars for bridges, I don't know if you have that.
Are you saying there's a wooden structure there now?
Yes.
I haven't seen it.
There's currently an old wooden structure there, I was thinking of the, uh.
Bridges, see the flat cars.
Like the old thing.
Just a boss.
Now, they have the round ones, this place, they're a lot cheaper than if we.
Yeah.
Oh, it costs like fifty grand, this is like twenty.
Yeah.
See, boy, was that, that.
Square one for.
What's that? One of them junking city.
I'm committing up to you.
So that's what they're gonna do up there, eighteen grand.
Five thousand, five thousand pounds of crossing.
Service would be used, they want a little heavier thing.
We wouldn't be able to put a square one in there, it would collapse.
Some of that, I was doing that with Jim.
They, they can hold it a lot, they would put it in the water where it's gonna get, they're gonna degrade.
Now, there's, there's been concern that, oh, we can't, uh, there's too much water that drains down through this and we can't have a, a small tube like that.
It would have to be permitted by the state.
Yes, yes, and the uphill landowner said he's in agreement with whatever needs to be done there, uh, cause we both know, he knows and I know, most everybody that knows down in that country, when the water gets, when the creek gets about half full, it breaks out in a hundred different places anyway. And so the, the future of that creek running pool is.
That's down in the flatlands area, kind of over here southeast of town, David has a lot of irrigated, uh, fi, farms out there and that's, it's a flatter area, so it ain't a real big ditch river like some of these creeks are. It's like a flatter area, so that's water goes all over, doesn't it, between you and Wesley's used to, and down to, and Johnson Morton, so it is all over the place.
If this man's less than twenty feet, it's not a bridge, then a culvert or, but then it can be also, because it'd be the entire creek, not just like a dry culvert, we'd have, they would consider, the state would consider it a low water crossing. Cause it's the same crossing that we have in both of Creek, Quarry, that's a low water crossing, it has culverts for the water to move underneath it, but the state considers that a low water crossing, it'd have to be permitted. So it's not something like we can just go in, get a box car that fits it right.
And put it, fix it, yeah.
It, we have to get, apply.
Permits, with Tanner, you'd have to deal with Tanner and figure out.
We'd have to apply, we'd have to design it out, and if it's under twenty feet, we can do it ourselves, because that's considered a culvert.
The current bridge is forty feet long.
So that's, we'd have to narrow this fan down to twenty feet. Because.
Or.
Or make it, it have to be an actual bridge.
It'll have to be a bridge and then go through the process of all that.
Tanner's aware of this.
Okay.
Place we have.
Have you talked to Tanner about it, Dan?
Yes.
Okay.
Tanner will be here next Monday, I'll bring this up with him too.
Yeah, good. Tell him it was David Bell, cause he does do.
I'd, I'd just like to remind the county that this is a much more important road than maybe what it appears on the map and appears who all lives there, there's, uh, some of the highest taxed Lincoln County ground down that road, and, uh.
Yeah.
If, if, uh, if we can't get our produce west, it'll go east and it does not stay in the county, so I just, I'd offer that encouragement.
Yeah, I think.
If there's any other questions, just.
I, I do have a question.
Yes.
It's currently wooden, and you're offering, you're saying that you would offer to be part of that demolition, okay, so I would like to know how that works, and I'm not sure, if we had to pay to get it done, we may need to bid that out. Of course, if you're willing to do that, you could bid, but I think you'd probably have to carry a liability policy to do that.
Should not be a problem, I've done projects on state, I have a eighteen.
Okay, just letting that, I mean, I would have no problem letting someone do it, and if you needed to get your cost out of it or something, I'm sure it'd still be cheaper for us to do that, but I think technically we'd still have to bid out that project and then go from there, so, that's all I have.
Okay, but yeah, I'll, I'll look into it.
Do you have his numbers?
I don't, I'll give you them from here.
Yes, eight two two, two three five five.
Okay, um, quickly, before we move on with him, Ladona had sent an email wondering about Columbus Day, what day is Columbus Day in October?
It's something like the month of.
Tonight, so we need to, we need to schedule that promptly.
For what?
Every.
It's the fourteenth.
Every Columbus Day, it's the fourteenth, every Columbus Day, we do, since, since it's technically a holiday, but we have the employees do a meeting, so we either update them and tell them about the insurance package information.
You did that last year up here at the courthouse.
Yeah, but I don't know how we can schedule something until we know something.
And we don't know anything with P I C.
But are we still gonna, we're still gonna do a Columbus Day something, I mean, she wants to do, Ladona wants to do.
I don't think I look at it.
Does she do HIPAA training that day?
I know there's legal groups and everything.
Yeah, cause if, if it's up there, it's our twenty feet.
Did she do it last year?
She did last year.
Overstand.
And she did the forty.
Oh, then she didn't do it last year.
When it goes over twenty feet, it becomes a bridge.
Okay, well, she says she would like to have an hour for training on that day.
We could potentially still put boxcars in there.
We need to schedule something.
Because it wouldn't be an actual bridge system, state is still required to be a low water crossing, even though you wouldn't drag it in the water.
Okay, I don't care what's classified.
It just, but then you have to get permitting from the state to approve.
I would almost say.
What opening size tubes, higher.
Anything.
Well, currently, like I said, it's a four foot bridge.
It's a little hard to throw things in.
But they're supposed to have us in position by the thirtieth.
There might be some.
Which we need to discuss.
Yeah.
But even then, there's still not gonna know enough for involvement.
Then we're a culvert.
You, the only thing you're gonna be able to do is say yes, we're turning it with the state or no, we're not.
When we go over that.
Yeah, we might have our details on our plan.
So, I mean.
What are we gonna talk about?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna be responsible for finding something.
More chances for the state to say no.
I don't have the time for that and I have an election coming up. So I really don't.
No, I got, that's why I carried out with.
If we do something, yeah, you, you don't have the time to do it.
I, I don't.
Somebody else would have, Ladon, do we need to do that this year?
When he's here Monday, I'll take him out.
Or does it need to be a different day?
Yes.
When we do know.
Wouldn't mind.
Does that make sense?
You're busy election number six.
November fifth.
Yeah, you're obviously getting real busy for that.
Well, I have that. I have taxes, living.
Okay.
Right, I know, I know you're busy as hell.
You know, unless we are doing insurance, I don't have time to, to find things to happen, employees to do. Or even to contact those outside agencies to come in and offer a training.
Sometime on it to out there and look at that.
We're not training, but enrollment.
And kind of the day that you might not necessarily be able to get a third party person in here on that holiday, you know, it's a government.
Oh, sounds great. I know there's.
I've just basically told everybody that has asked that I don't think I'm signing on anything. Cause I just don't know how you're gonna have a contract signed and do that.
Right, Dave, thanks for coming. Do you have anything else or?
Not this time.
Not right now, okay. Thanks. All right, Brendan, do you have your, uh, issue?
I was wondering if we could go into executive session for a minute, discuss personnel, employees.
Personnel.
Sure.
I'll move to.
How much time do you need?
How long?
Uh, like five, ten minutes. Five minutes would be fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
Let's do ten, cause we always.
We always. All right, I'll, I'll move a motion.
Every time.
To move recess into executive session for ten minutes for the purpose of discussing, uh, highway department personnel. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five, four, three, one, nine, two, B. Number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded for a ten minute executive session. Did you say to?
And I'll just, I'll say to reconvene into.
The session matter isn't sufficient.
Oh, um, what did you say? I'm sorry. You, no.
Highway department personnel.
Highway department personnel.
Is it disciplinary? Is it, is it, um?
No, there's just a situation going on right now. That's why I said that's not.
Is it, is it, it's a health situation? Okay, a health situation. Yes, yes, we have.
Well, highway department personnel, health situation. And then to reconvene into the, uh, with to be, who do you want involved? Do you want Don to?
She can.
Okay, to, with the commissioners, the highway department director and the county clerk. To reconvene into the, uh, commissioners' meeting room when concluded.
And we.
Second.
And seconded. Now I'll call for a vote. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Brendan, do you have more stuff?
Yes. Wait for everything to be started, is it?
I think we're good.
We're, we're gone.
So this area here west of Vesper. The landowner there, Mr. Walker, talked with me this week on it. We went and looked at the road records. This little turnoff is not in the road records. And we're currently, the water, it comes down here, it goes up to the north and then tries to come back here and down to this culvert. This is a few feet higher than there. So what ends up happening is it backs up and it swirls back and takes this road out. Solution I proposed to them, this landowner was out there as well. He agreed with us and he was all right with this, if the county wanted to proceed with it. If we cannot take this out and reclaim this area for that landowner, we put one pipe here and another pipe there. So that way we still keep that for the large traffic that goes through there. That's why I'm guessing why it was put in. And that will carry it here down this to this dry finger of the creek. And I was out there with this landowner and that landowner and both were in agreement that that would work. Short of putting, if we came back here to try and run just one single pipe, we'd end up having to dig down almost eight to nine feet back here. Material removed. Whereas if we came across right here, it's just what we would need to dig out, to put the pipe in and then clean up the ditch.
So when you do something like this, I mean, are you gonna assign this to the bridge crew?
The bridge crew would do it, yeah.
Okay. And do you have any, I'm asking you this early, but do you have any current list going for these types of projects?
They have some list.
Okay.
And that's what I spoke with them about. It wasn't something that we could fix today or tomorrow.
Yeah.
But it would be, if the commissioner decided that was what we wanted to do, or how they wanted me to proceed on it, we'd put it on the list. And as time allows, start getting these down.
You got a priority list kind of set up?
Not yet.
Not yet. I know you're.
I'm trying to keep my feet.
I know you're getting, you're getting a million things coming at you.
Cause I've got, I've got all the time curves.
Sure.
Invoicing.
Sure.
Yeah.
Just, I've had three hours with these to show me enough and stuff, but.
Yeah.
Like there's apparently that we have to send out invoices for fuel.
Yeah.
I can't get into the fuel system, so I don't know how I would get that.
How is that separate?
I have no idea. That's, I would have stopped over there, cause they said there's a computer in where our fuel's at. Where they'd get an invoice off of, throw, or print off the list.
For all the different departments who's.
And I went in, I, there's nowhere on it, her little password book, there's no passwords. It was already logged into something. And as I went to find out, how much is in each tank off that based on their system? It says insufficient permissions. So that's where after this, I was gonna go look the number up and try and call them to.
Did you call Liz to ask her for the password?
Not yet. It was just this morning.
She, okay, okay. So when they, I've never seen it. When they go to get fuel, do they, there's a computer there?
There's a, there's a building next to the pumps as well. And that's where they said Michael would go into, to get the report, my understanding.
But when you go to get fuel from.
There is a thing you punch in your numbers. You have a code.
You have a code that codes your amount of fuel and it clocks your amount of fuel that you take for that code for whoever.
Everybody have like a debit card, you know?
No, it's a little key. You push in the machine, just this little key, push in the machine. You type in your number.
Okay.
And then you.
Okay, so you can generate invoices because it's already tracked the usage under which department, so.
But I don't know where I would get that information from, exactly.
Or you can't.
It goes somewhere. I can't get into.
You can't get a report out of a computer somehow or get logged into it or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you know who owns that computer? You have a phone number for them, right?
Nope.
For their service.
That's where I was gonna go back to.
Why don't you guys just approve allowing Liz to help them?
Because that's, she's been real tentative about helping because it hasn't been.
Well, I didn't know the situation with Jennifer. I asked Jennifer, I didn't know.
Well, she can't help during business hours, but she could help early and after.
Well, that's fine with me if Jennifer agrees again. I thought we was, I didn't want to step on Twitter.
That's outside of the.
What's a password?
Show me how to do some things.
He has to be able to learn how to do things.
Yeah. Well, then let's make him, I'll make a motion too.
I'm gonna step out for.
Well, then when we hire the next office manager, part of their, part of their contract needs to be that they don't receive their, uh, severance pay of their leave time and vacation time unused or any of that until the next person has all this information, because that's a crock.
Well, that's over with and done, well.
No, it's not. We're hiring a new office manager. And if they want their severance pay, if they want their paid leave time and everything else, and they sign a contract, that they will relinquish all of this information to the next person before they're gone.
Well, we could do that.
And not available.
That can also be part of your handbook, that there should be.
Yes, that should be in the handbook.
This is information that you keep track of all the time.
And it should be available.
So if you die tomorrow, someone can step in and still do it.
Right.
But right now.
That's why we need more cross-training.
Cannot, Liz worked for us outside her normal duty hours upstairs.
That's fine. I'm just saying that's a failure on the commission's part to have to pay overtime for someone to just give someone a little bit of instruction and passwords.
Some employers require them to walk out the door the minute they terminate, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But those employers also have, uh, here's your list of things that you do and how you do it.
Right, there should be.
Not always.
Did we?
A good employer.
Did we not authorize Liz to work overtime on her off duty hours? That's already in the book, correct?
Yeah.
No, through August thirtieth.
Through August thirtieth. Well, I could make a motion again to have Liz Lee, uh, work with Brendan overtime.
At your request, before normal working hours, after working hours or weekends, whenever.
That ain't gonna interfere with her job up here with the county attorney.
That'd be, she's been able to come over for three times for.
And we'll, we'll leave that open. We'll leave that with no deadline.
You just schedule it with her, is what we're saying.
We just want to, see, we authorized her before I, Don said, she's correct. We said to the end of August.
Yes.
And I know she's kind of been helping you. Well, I'm making a motion now to have her do it again, but we'll leave it, maybe should we leave it open? Or make it for another month or two or whatever? Do you want some specific date for your book?
It's up to you guys.
So until further notice, let him.
Until further notice. Yeah, so, so I'm making a motion to let you work with Ms. Liz Lee again. Well, at your convenience and her convenience when she's not working her normal job and, uh, until further notice.
That'd be a big help. Cause right now, I'm just trying to keep that apartment.
We know, I know. We threw, we threw you in there. You got thrown in there and.
There's no instruction or how, why, what is done.
Well, I think there are no lists or, or checklists or.
Like I just found out about fuel Friday when I was in here dropping invoices off. They asked, well, where do you get some of those invoices out?
Right.
I have no idea. Like, well, that has to go. I guess I will see what I can find out on it.
Okay.
I will second that specifically, that it does not interfere with her duties.
Yeah.
It has been moved and seconded. The commission approves overtime pay out of the highway department budget for Liz Lee, who has been hired from the highway to the county attorney. When requested to put in hours and available for Mr. McKay until further notice. That's how we understand it, correct?
As long as it does not interfere with her.
Well, that's between her and her boss. We're not her, we're not her boss. We're just approving to pay her to do contracted work. But she's still a county employee, so it's just gonna come in her paycheck as overtime out of our county highway department budget, correct?
Correct.
Got it. Motion, uh, call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I will just send her an email that says.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. That'd be good.
Something I can figure out maybe how to get my own self into the fuel program, so I don't have to keep borrowing some of the number.
Well, yeah, you betcha. Well, who's the, you don't know who operates that software or that hardware for all that system?
Oh, no, I, I do know.
Well, hopefully we'll find that out. Maybe Liz can help you with that.
Yeah.
Okay. What, anything else?
Couple of things. Um, there, there's been, last week, there was two roads that were disced up. Uh, the commission wanted me to proceed on that.
Yeah.
What was the question?
What?
Two roads that were disced up. One just west of town here and then one on Jaguar and one Fiftieth.
I had suggested that when we find these type of things where it's an issue with what the landowner is doing, I think he needs it to document it. Draft a letter that he wants us to approve to send. And the commission needs to address the landowner and say, excuse me, but you've now disced into the right of way and we need this for drainage purposes. We have to retain so much millable water pa- you know, water impa- pass, however you wanna word that.
Well, I go.
I think the commission needs to, but I mean, instead of this person getting personally blamed every time there's a problem with the landowner, I think the commission needs to just send a letter. But we don't wanna have to type it up because of the gap in time and everything. So if you just bring us a letter and say, this is what I found, this is the address, this is the landowner, please sign this, and then we'll sign it.
I know.
Anything, I don't, I don't see a better solution.
Well, there's one issue that I talked to Brendan about. This road is not even used. It's, weeds grew up big and tall because it goes to the creek and the creek is on the bull foot north of the Bullfoot Creek down there at, uh, one Fiftieth. And, uh, they just wanna knock the weeds down. They didn't mean to upset us, so, but, but that was one issue. And, uh, but I said, well, it's still county property. You can't just be grating, disking it up. With, with the grader hadn't been in there ever because it's kind of like a dead end road. And I almost asked them, that if they own the land on both sides of this dirt road, I'm saying you could request the county maybe to close that road. It's like a quarter of a mile from Jaguar going south to the creek. It's like a quarter of a mile on one Fiftieth. And nobody uses it but these farmers. So, but that's a different issue, I know, but I know.
So it's the same landowner? He disced up the road and then wanted us to?
Well, well, the same landowner owns, landowner owns, but he rents, he rents one half to one guy, one half to the other guy. And one guy didn't like it, but.
Okay.
But they'll get along, they'll get along too. It was, that was just an issue.
I, I went down there and he was driving.
Did you see it?
Yes, I went, I drove down it.
We intend to enforce this policy now countywide.
I would, I would assume. I'm saying, I think it's been handled poorly in the past because it's either been one person, be it the director or even, I don't know, whoever shows up on scene for that particular issue. And then they have this personal conversation and then the landowner has one concept and then the highway department has another. And then the commission just gets the third hand report. I think anytime that we find damaged property or an issue, which is pretty common with the farmers kind of filling in the ditch, cause you disced up and it, it ri- it raises that level of.
But I can think of one.
Grade.
That it's not an issue. They farmed through the road, but it's on top of the hill and so there's no drainage problem as far as ditches and stuff. Do we wanna tell them, as we do everybody else, that you gotta back off the right of way?
I don't think we should send out, I guess in the past, there's been a layer that's sent out to all the farmers.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
I don't think we should do that again because the people that don't, that follow it, they're gonna be, they're.
Take it personally.
Yes, and the people that don't, they were not gonna really care about it.
Put it in the paper though. Did we actually mail?
I, I got one in the, in the mail, but I think it came with my tax bill.
That's what I've been, put it in the paper, so I don't think we should send it out to everyone.
Yeah, I, 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 I have it on my refrigerator, so.
With your tax bill? When was that?
Once you move into the right of way, FSA measures that and you are taxed on that and it also cuts into your federal allocation lands.
Or maybe it was the assessment, maybe it was the assessment.
Think they. I don't remember sending in, I, I remember putting it in the paper. Oh, maybe we did a mass mail.
I, that's why I'm told there's a mass mailer on it. And I don't think that'd be the right way to proceed because the people that abide by it, they're gonna take it personally. And the people that are doing it, they're not, it's not really.
Well, in some places it's causing a problem and other places it's not causing a problem. I don't think that we need to go around looking for it when this issue comes up.
And the only reason these guys graded, uh, disced us, cause the weeds have grown up because nobody takes that rubber down. They're like five foot tall, pig weeds with all this rain. And they just get, just to kind of.
One sixtieth, please, please go look at it. It's, uh, there's milo that needs to be cut and our renters are already saying, how am I gonna get it out of there? I mean, there are.
Well, the grader operators need to even go grade them roads even cause they're like dead end roads. But sometimes they don't get graded much because they're like a dead end old road that, because the bridge is out down on one Fiftieth of Bullfoot Creek. Nobody goes through there, so nobody comes from the north there no more cause the bridge is out. So just some farmers on that both sides use it. So that's the whole issue there.
Okay.
It's really not a big deal there. I mean, I, I know we don't wanna have policy to keep doing this, but for them it's not.
It's a minimum maintenance, dirt road.
Right. But they could grade it once a year maybe, once a summer, just to kill the weeds. That's all they ask. To, it's only a half mile.
I, I know, I know, if we, if.
Half, you could do it in an hour, you're done.
We got two spots that it happened in one week.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's just because I'm new. And I, and I hope it's not. I, I just don't want it to become an issue.
I don't think it's that much of an issue really. I mean, I really don't. I think it's happened here.
It takes quite a long time to get a road built up. And that's a lot of money invested on a road that gets used once, once a year.
Well, maybe we should call, some of them we could, maybe call, let the farmers just take it up because nobody uses it. But that's a different issue kind of.
But, cause that.
You're right, I know we don't wanna disc it up, yeah.
Some of those roads are for illegal dump sites so that they can go and dump their trash a long time ago.
Down in the creek.
People used to dump. Now they don't do it as much, but that's what those roads.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Most people dump it back in the creek.
This is where mobile three one one eventually will come in so handy. You mark this stretch of road. The only two people using it are the landowners on either side. Eventually you have a conversation with them and ask them to close it. And then we relinquish our duties to it. And, and your individual route operators should kind of have an idea.
Yeah.
And I asked.
Which ones can be closed.
And I asked, like on that one fiftieth, I asked those guys who farm it, they know, they're our friends, and I was just saying, if you guys want us to close that county up, then you can do whatever you want with that road, and maybe you should, cause nobody's using that but them.
Yeah.
Unless you would, we could theoretically drive down, cause it's still a puddle of road, to the creek, if you wanted to fish in the Bullfoot Creek or something like that, or hunt maybe, but otherwise it's never used except for them farmers. Yeah, Norman?
Yeah, when does the landowner have control over the right of way?
If we close the road?
Nope.
You don't.
Oh, you don't.
When I, if I wanna go hunting, I have to get permission from the landowner, because we still own that land to the center of the road, if I wanna go hunting there, it's.
It's not to the center of the road though, it's the right of way, the county owns the, the twenty four foot span or whatever the road is. The right of way is from the edge of the road in.
Even if we close the road, the county still owns the property?
No, 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 the county owns nothing, oh, is that what you're asking, if the road is closed?
No, no, if it's not closed.
Yeah.
Oh, no, it's open now, Papa, you're right, I agree.
Fish and game, fish and game will tell you.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta get permission from the landlord to hunt on the road.
And you can't shoot from the road.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I thought you meant like to, I was misunderstanding what you were telling.
Can't shoot from a road, no, you can't.
I think you could, I think you could stand on the road and shoot.
We're not out in a car.
No, I'm not, I'm a field, I'm a storm.
Okay, continue.
Let's go on.
A few other things. Uh, landowner asked about, was acquiring about us selling this forty foot of pipe? It wouldn't be for a covert and access to their field, it'd be for something out in their pasture, is that something the county wants to do?
We'd sell it, they wanna buy pipe from us.
They wanna buy forty feet of galvanized pipe.
How big around?
Eighteen inch.
Do we have it on stock?
We have it, but when we buy it, we don't pay taxes on it, and it would be for a landowner's private use, not like an access to a field, it'd be out in the field.
But it's agricultural. Have to charge sales tax on it, but the thing is, is whether or not you'd have to pull the invoice and help share in the cost of the expense of shipping them here, if they were shipped here or our expense.
Oh, I would think we would get some kind of markup on it from what we pay.
But you can charge sales tax and then you.
But do we have to?
But is it our policy to sell, be a salesman, stuff like that?
We can't sell it if they're, um, wouldn't they be taxed exempt for farm use?
No, not, we're not allowed to sell anything unless we were, we charge sales tax, so.
That's fair.
So if we were to, to do something like that, then we would have to assess them just.
No, I mean.
I don't know why they wanna come to county to buy pipe like that, they can go to a.
Well, they wanted the county to give it to them originally, that's what they had gotten with the last director and I figured out, or it was in talks, what I was told, I don't know if it was, but that's what they informed me, it was that a predecessor, but he hadn't done it yet, so I don't know if it was just, because I'm new.
I think it's cause you're new, cause there's no way in the world that he would have done that.
Exactly, so, that's why I'm bringing it up here, is it something we wanna, do we wanna sell it, or do we wanna?
I don't think we wanna sell it, and I don't think we don't wanna give it away either. Just tell them that, then tell them to go to a private contractor to buy it, right.
And that's what I, I told them, I'm like, oh, I'll speak with the commissioner, and actually being, just guess this, cause I'm new, I don't know what's been done before.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure we, we're, our eyes dotted, our T's crossed.
Yeah.
So I'll give that, I know we're about to call.
Tell them to short our inventory.
If you would make a ruling that's determined it's of no value to the county, then you could sell.
Used things.
Like if we're doing an auction of old equipment or something.
No, like the, the grader blades, worn out mulboards, they sell those for.
Yeah, you can sell them, no, we.
But this is, this is a brand new thing that we would, we would be using our sales.
That we basically bought and then re, yeah, yeah, let's say.
Well, if you have old stuff, we put it on auction, that's true, but not here, not in this case.
No, it would, it would be our new stock.
Right.
Okay.
Just tell them no.
And that's what I thought, that's what I wanted, I held off on it.
I don't know if we have a policy going on that officially, but maybe we oughta have.
Well, let's just don't even start.
No, let's don't even start, in this sort of case, no, we'll say no.
And then, the last lun- the luncheon that was on the nineteenth, the, moving lunch for district two, which is all the heads of district two counties, they recommended Mr. O'Hara been to all of them, was the KAC meeting and the KCHA meeting in November, the Kansas Association of Counties and Kansas County Highway Association, that's on the twelfth to fourteenth of November in Wichita.
That's, is that when commissioners do it?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that we won't need to attend as well?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so. Cause you meet a lot of other.
We're supposed to go there?
Yeah, we can, yeah, you haven't been notified.
Yes, ma'am.
You, maybe, sometimes they email you some of that stuff.
It's been in Overland Park, but now this, he says Wichita.
Pennsylt.
They rotate every two years.
Yeah, it's in November, what, the twelfth or?
Twel- thirteenth and fourteenth.
Yeah, you should go if you can make it, that's a good, you, you get to, uh, meet a lot of other people that are gonna help you out.
And since I'm still within my six month probationary period, how should I do the timing for that then? Since I can't take, I can't use my vacation time for that, attended.
No, that's paid, that's working out.
Okay.
It's a business trip.
It's part of your salary, I mean, your salary, so just go, and, yeah, and that's how I see it, do you have any discrepancy there?
Not for, not for specific meetings like this.
Yeah, usually for the lodging, and then you get the meal stipend, which, you can look that up, I forget what the numbers are, but there's a dollar amount, but some of the meals are provided in that.
Okay. Then I cover the lodging part?
No, we do.
County does.
And they recommended, highly recommended that I attend that, well, I will speak with the commission Monday. And.
Good, I'm glad you met some people.
Yep.
Resources.
And they'll help you, more people will help you get figured out what's going on with all this stuff.
This, the block pit reclamation over west of Westburg.
Yes, yes.
So, for final reclamation, all it needs is seeded with broom, um, broom glass, sorry, some type, broom grass.
Grass, yeah.
There was someone that we had hired.
Doug Levine.
Huh?
Doug Levine probably.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, he's one, Levine is seeding.
We didn't need to bid that out, how big of a project is it?
You know how many acres that is, or, have you been out there?
I've been out there and looked at it to make sure that we had all piles removed, piles are removed, it's just overgrown with natural vegetation.
Well, I don't know if we wanna take bins for seeding, but we could, but the local guy that Levine does a lot of it for the state county.
There's a certain dollar amount we have to bid, is what I'm getting at, and I don't know what that costs, cause I've never paid for it.
Well, it's the conservation district, cause they plant broom grass, and they've got the drill and everything over there, and there might be a way that they could help you fund that or do it for you.
They, from what I've been told, a little bit in the past, is they'll rent out their drill for a.
They have one hill, but then you will have.
We would use.
You, you can seed it yourselves if you have tractors.
A couple of acres.
And please just proceed with that, because I think I told you this last time, but I spoke with one of the landowners and there seems to be, maybe that's because it's a, it's a, an estate or whatever, but we had received those letters from the attorney and they wanted certain things done, and basically what I was told is, we just want it finished, so get the state out there, and we told them that that's what we would do, is just do it according to the state's requirements, get it approved and be done with it.
And it says the state will be out there in the spring, that's what it said on your.
But wasn't that last spring? Surely we didn't mean spring twenty twenty, I don't remember that. That's what it said on the letter that we sent.
It said the state will be out in the spring.
I think that was in, from the winter of this earlier.
Okay.
Because that's why they're upset, is we're just sitting on it and they can't use it, and they wanna use it and surely we didn't mean next spring.
Best engineer judgment, I'll bet the landowners on each side would rent that drill and plant that, cause it's their benefit.
Okay.
I don't know who they are, but I'll bet you they're conservation minded.
The only reason we would do grass is because what, it was originally permitted in nineteen ninety five, was it said it would be finished with broom grass. The state statute for reclamation says, just return it to natural vegetation.
Oh, so they're.
So what's growing in there is natural vegetation, but because we turned in saying broom grass, that's why it's not.
Mm-hmm, we need to do what the contract says.
Yes, and that's what I found on it, so.
Yeah, broom grass is normal, like waterways or.
And I think if.
But is it too late to plant, plant the broom grass?
Well, there's a, there's a, they have a planning schedule like at the, FSA down there.
Some are saying.
I don't think so.
So we have to get on.
Look the conservation district gets.
FSA down there too, and, yeah, NRCS, you know where they're at, right, Brendan? They'd have, they have plant dates for like broom grass and stuff.
courthouse.
And you can, I don't know if we wanna rent, you can rent their drill up here, I've done it and planted waterways, but I don't know if we wanna do that.
We would have to spray, or we'd have to spray the weeds first.
Yeah, you may wanna just hire that gun.
Well, can we just call, well, why, why can't we spray it?
Cause we don't have the equipment and people to do it.
We don't really make spray.
We don't have no sprayer.
How big is it? It's not that big.
Quite a few acres. Not like a sprayer from a truck, but an actual agricultural sprayer.
Yeah, like a, like farm spraying. Well, first we need to find out how many, how big it is, how many acres.
Yeah.
If it's like ten acres, then it's bigger, we should hire it down, if it's one, we can do it ourselves.
It's more than one acre.
Yeah, it's that will try, like outside where the big one, how big?
You can see a portion of it from that, that area to the north.
Up here.
Oh, that, that little area?
How much it would cost to send it over, cause sometimes he has excess, he charged the noxious weed not very much to do a.
Yeah, Dan Hena, maybe he can coordinate, he can spray it.
If they have the stuff in the tank and they have some extra.
Well, is that not something we could delegate to Dan maybe, and just ask him to do it straight?
You know Dan, Hena, or noxious weed guy.
He really hadn't even think.
I haven't had any time to get.
Yeah, I know, well, maybe we could, so he sprays, he sprays our roads and stuff, and, uh, he has the chemicals and the sprayer. We can have him spray it if you're gonna do a boom down.
He doesn't have a boom sprayer.
If it's not smooth, his truck's not gonna go.
Well, depends on how rough it is or whatever, we need to go look at it.
Why do you need to go look at it?
See what kind of condition it is and how big it is.
That's his job now.
Well, yeah, you do it, or you go to shop to, uh.
The weeds are a little bit taller than me.
You've been there?
I, I, I drove as far as I could into it, I didn't wanna get the truck stuck in the jungle basically, cause the weeds were.
You don't wanna know what it looks like, correct?
Take my suggestion and call Clay Herring and see what it would cost to spray it. And then if it's absolutely unprohibitive.
Is he listed under that or is he listed under?
Well, if it's bigger, ready.
So struck aviation.
Hip struck aviation, sorry.
Foot drop service.
Five two four five two four zero.
Cause sometimes if he still has a hopper full of chemicals, he's happy to.
Be cheap and get it done and, and what is the statutory obligation for us to bid out, I can't remember?
I thought it was ten thousand dollars or higher, but you read that one day.
This wouldn't be that big though, would it?
I just wanna make sure you know what that limit is, so that in the future.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, next.
And then, I'm still waiting on next tech to have me as an approved user on our account, so I can log in and see usage of the tablets, in case one individual tablets went high again, and to get a quote for a phone, so that way people don't think I'm a telemarketer, and I can keep work things separate.
Okay, so next tech.
They, they need a fax with, from someone that is on the approved list with updated names.
And I'm not going to do that until we get the entire department appointed, so then that way, we don't have to do it two or three times. Number two, Verizon would like to give us a bid, and I don't wanna enter into a contract for a telephone.
What's the bid for, phones?
For phones and the tablets service.
Oh, the tablet service that we have, okay.
A little bit cheaper through Verizon, so we really don't wanna make any changes on the plan yet.
Yeah, but is it that difficult to just give them an access?
Well, you have to send in a letter, and then they have to send it all through their corporate system and, and put his name, and then every time we do that, we have to do something different. So it'd just be easier if we're interviewing on Tuesday, that we just wait. Because nine times out of ten, and I'm sorry, is it really that needed to, to look at what the data usage is on the tablets?
Just so we don't go over on our bill again, it's been over the last few months.
Oh, on just the tablets?
We there are, just one tablet in particular, but just so that way I can make sure that now that the tablets are going back out to individuals that weren't using them.
Which tablet is it, just out of curiosity?
Noxious weed.
So they don't have any kind of internet up there?
No, they have internet up there.
He can't turn it on to get the, to jump the wifi from?
Probably don't know the password.
Don't know the password for what?
The wifi.
BS.
I, I don't.
I am sorry, I am so sick and tired of this, this is ridiculous.
It's not your fault though, but if we are going over on one particular tablet, I mean, and have we been paying for that?
But we only were made aware of it two weeks ago, come on, let's just get over it, let's move on, let's do our jobs.
Well, that's not his fault, that's not his fault.
I don't see what the need of monitoring our tablet data usage is when we have lots more work to do.
I understand, but what he's saying is, there's one particular tablet that's not hooked up to the wifi to get more data space and it's billing us extra, so let's just get that taken care of, that's the real issue here, it's not anything else, you can get the bid from Verizon and you can get put on.
Yeah, I was gonna get bids before I purchased them, that's why, why I was wanting to add it to there, so I could get the bid from them.
Well, what else are we using, um?
You can get a bid from.
Well, that's what they said, they wouldn't quote me because I, I'm not on the approved user list. That's, that's what I've been told, I'm sorry, I'm the messenger, that's what they told me, that I cannot get the quote from them, I cannot get access to their, those accounts.
Well, if it makes you feel better, they told me down, I went down there to find out about the home service, that I wasn't even on the account, so that's kinda why I like to get away from next tech.
And what I still don't know after all this time is, what we're using next tech for, I mean, the IT, IT contract, yes.
Two separate next texts, next tech wireless, next tech computers.
Okay.
They're both called next tech.
But, but the computers is our IT contract currently.
Correct.
The wireless, who, like, where do we have them, do we have them at multiple locations, do we just have them?
Hang on, who do we have?
Wireless, just wireless.
Wireless, just the tablets?
Mm-hmm, highway department.
Highway department, tablets.
Okay.
And then we have a cellphone plan where you have a cellphone in each of the ambulances.
And that's through?
Next tech, your emergency management. Um, I wanna say there's a couple of fire districts that have a phone.
Through our plan?
Yes, but let's just tell you how old it was, remember the ambulance service told you that they're flip phones? So I think they're the original phones.
Does that mean that the county is paying out of our budget, the contract where the phones are in the fire departments?
No, we build the fire departments, so anybody that has services gets billed services for their department.
Okay. Okay, so we only have next tech wireless for the highway department, um, tablets and the cell, cellphones in the ambulance and the fire districts, we don't have any cellphones for the highway department this time.
No, we used to have, and then they went with the radios.
Yeah, and are people using those? Do people use their radios?
Cause they said the cellphones were.
Yeah, in the highway department, okay, so that's still like an okay method of communication, intercommunication between two grader operators or, okay. Are we paying for a service for that, or that's, we've just bought and purchased the equipment, so it's, okay.
To my knowledge, it's a business plan.
Okay.
They travels for.
Well, get whatever kind of, um, well, but that's true, if, if we already have, are you letting Verizon, um, you expecting to let Verizon bid the cellphone plans that we already have? Okay, then we wanna add you on to that and keep that as an extra line on, okay, I got it.
And the bus has two phones.
You please call Dan Hena, Noxious Weed, and tell him that he needs to hook his tablet up to the wifi.
I've already spoken with him.
Oh, so he knows now how to do that? That takes care of the overbilling.
He knows that the data will be watched to make sure it's not, he thought it was AccuWeather doing it.
Okay, well, I mean, your, your system draws and updates.
You can see the usage on the bill to begin with, so.
Catch it before it becomes a hundred dollars every month.
Yeah.
Hundred and forty one dollars, cause the hundred and forty one is had last.
That's your total bill, it was like fifteen dollars a week.
Well, regardless, let's save it, we don't need to spend it, so let's save it, um.
Have you talked to the, uh, engineering people at the lake?
Yeah.
Spocky?
Yeah.
I, yes, I spoke with them last week. Told them the commission's decision to stop services, write us a bill for what's already been done, we're gonna explore other options before we continue.
Did they talk to you about the bill, what they've done thus far?
No.
And they didn't send anything yet?
I haven't seen anything from them yet.
Did you get a chance to, uh, remember we talked possibly make another road, uh, you didn't get a chance to check it out?
Not with.
That's fine, I know you got it.
With my hand and trying to get everything in.
Yeah, I know, that's fine, I'm just curious. Yeah, I know, that's fine. I'm just curious. Anything else?
No, uh. I believe I got everything and I think I did, I figured out. The road closures, there's not a specific form, but it is going to the landowners in the area to give the road. Back to the landowners, basically. Getting the appraiser's office to print out and then bring it into the meeting here. There'll be a landowner in the office wanting me to fill out a form for it. And there's no form, direct form for it. It's. Just getting one of these sheets, having them both landowners sign on it and presenting it to the commission if the commission wants to bring it away. Or do away with the road through there. My understanding, is that correct?
Oh, yes, cause then we have to hear, we have to hold an actual public hearing, which is a formality. But allowing someone to come and explain why it would be a bad idea to close it.
Yeah. Yes, I didn't know if there was a form out there, even exact form, I haven't found it, but I've been told there isn't one. It's just.
Have you ever seen any before? Any forms, anything like that?
When we do the hearing, it's an official form. But as far as getting the landowners to agree. You basically, you ask them to agree, cause they may not agree, and we are still allowed to hold a hearing, even if there's not agreement. Because the landowner actually reclaims to the center of the road. That's where the center of the road line comes in, Mr. Mantle, you had asked about. The center of the road then becomes the property line between the two properties if the county closes the road.
Do I need their name and signature on an appraiser sheet like this? No?
That's what I'm saying. They don't. It's not, it's not their decision, but they're allowed to have their input and we'd prefer that you have them agree. And that's a good idea to close it. Otherwise, there had to be a reason to close it if someone didn't wanna close.
So what I specifically said was the landowner house two requested. You contact the adjacent landowner. And if they're in agreeance to it, you come to the commissioners, the commissioners approve it. Then you go to the appraiser's office and ask the appraiser's office to do you a description of the road. And then that description gets sent to my office and I do a preliminary road vacation hearing. That's what I explained.
You have to publish it in the paper, right?
But you guys have to approve it and it's twice.
Is does the statute?
Once and you have a hearing ten days later.
But does the statute say that the landowner has to request the closure? We can't just.
We can for them, but if they protest the closure, you can't close the road. It's kinda my understanding.
If it was our, if we initiated the closure and is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So if they, if one requests it and the other one.
So oftentimes, you guys were having the highway guy do the legwork to make sure that both were gonna be in grants before we pay all the money. Cause then we have to send a certified mail-in out in the publication.
Okay. So your, what you draw up for the uh road vacation that we sign for the hearing, that's the only formal paperwork. But we do have to publish, uh publish it for a week, two weeks?
You publish it once and you have a hearing ten days later, but you have to send certified notice to all the adjacent landowners.
So then you need the appraiser's office for this?
Now, if you wanna create a form.
Then if we, uh, after that's published, then.
So it would be called a road.
Yeah, then you guys do an actual road vacation.
We do a vacation and then we sign it. We did that.
And then it gets recorded and registered.
That was it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Twelve o'clock, next.
Did you want me to stay for this one as well?
I guess, yeah. What do we?
Um, I believe this was a follow-up to our interview and job offer. So we would need a closed session. I would suggest thirty minutes. Does that sound? We don't have anything else on the agenda, so unless there's, did you come with something you needed to discuss? Anyone else they had a particular issue? I think we can conclude shortly after we have an executive session. So, oh, one thing I'd like to bring up before we close the session. I had an email requesting, I said about Ladonna doing for um the Columbus Day. Do you wanna just say no, we're not doing one at all? No Columbus Day training?
We don't have a.
Too short notice. Let's talk about pick really quick. So she called today and she said she has preliminary numbers from Blue Cross Blue Shield. But something about them, she wants to ask more questions. So she would have time available on Wednesday if you guys wanted to have a special meeting. Or that she would come on Monday.
Can she come on Wednesday before the meeting for the hospital board?
I don't know if she can come that late, but I can ask. And I don't know what it is about the numbers, but anyways, uh, she did email the state and they said that they would accept a. Email termination, so you guys decide, do you wanna meet Wednesday as a special meeting or do you want to?
Well, what what could she possibly need from us that we would have access to for insurance information from Blue Cross Blue Shield? We don't have anything.
Well, she must.
No, she needs to bring you the numbers for you guys to make the determination whether or not you're terminating with the state of Kansas. Health insurance plan or not. Yes. But she she didn't wanna do, well, she didn't wanna do it today because there's something in the number she doesn't like or she had more questions about. So, um, she wants the time to do that. So she said she'd be Wednesday or Monday.
We, why don't we do it Wednesday?
Well, we can still email. She's saying we can still email our termination.
If something goes wrong.
Monday's not too late, or?
No, cause we can email them that day.
Got permission to email them our cancellation on Monday. Technically, we've been told that it has to be in the mail and writing, but.
Well, maybe we should not. But can, but can it have a postdate stamp of that day? Because.
I have no idea. I would imagine, but.
Well, she should know that.
If she'll come Wednesday at five, we have our meeting at six. If not, I mean, I'll just, I can call her on Wednesday if she wants to come in the day. If you guys are coming here.
Yeah, I can do it Wednesday, anytime, anytime.
One way or another, but if it's in the daylight, I, or before our evening meeting, I'll probably just call and I'll come to like.
If you wait till the thirty, you have absolutely no slack if she has something.
True, and we should send it in mail and email, be sure.
Okay, so.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm gonna try as late as possible. Okay, got it.
Yeah, did she say she needed to be here in person?
Yes, she's coming in person.
No, she may want to discuss things, which is, that's good.
It's kinda what I took of the conversation. But probably so she can explain. You know, it's a little hard if you're looking at something and understanding.
Well, and over the phone, yeah. I have, in person's good, okay. And then we have a six o'clock meeting with the.
Hospital board.
Hospital board, Wednesday.
And are you guys confident that this room is big enough for that?
Yeah.
I think so. We'll just, we'll set those chairs around and and there should still be enough for some extras in the bag. Who's the feet to get this desktop in here? So we're gonna use it and just.
And then with Ladonna's deal, we're not gonna plan anything for that day, huh? Or do you think?
If that's the only thing that we have.
Yeah, I don't see how we can make use of the day.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
I'm just gonna be honest with you.
What, uh, what would, right, we don't have anything.
I would say next year, the plan should be that in Sep- the beginning of September, we notify every department head that they need to come up with a training. For their own people for that day. We can do the health training, she can do her portion in the in the daytime before lunch. And then each department can have a particular training that's scheduled for the afternoon. Then you make use of that day. So we'll just say, I'm gonna.
But nothing this year?
Right.
Okay.
It's not useful to have an unscheduled set of events that day and require people to be there.
Are we ready for executive session?
Yes, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, recess it to executive session for, what, thirty minutes?
Yes.
For thirty minutes for the purpose of discussing, uh, highway department personnel and, uh.
Follow-up interview.
Follow-up interview, should I say, with who?
Sure.
Mister Gordon Kruger and Director, also as a Director of the Highway Department along with the Commissioners and County Court.
Sure.
Pursuant to discuss personnel matters pursuant to KSA seventy-five four three one nine. To be, number one, to discuss personnel matters and unelected personnel, to reconvene in the courthouse meeting room when concluded.
And did you say thirty minutes?
For thirty minutes.
I'll second that. We've moved and seconded for thirty minute executive session as a follow-up to an interview for the road supervisor position. Any questions? Those in favor, vote aye. Aye, motion carries. I think if we just, if you can tell us what position we're not gonna fill, then I would be comfortable with moving forward. Because I think they need to know that.
Well, we can't pick that out now. Maybe where's, they can determine where, they can cross over people to fill in.
We've lost eight people in the last year, right? There's eight positions, eight spots that haven't been opened.
I thought it was seven.
Seven.
Recognizing the structure that you're going to have when you don't have a bridge crew, or you don't need a bridge crew, cause they're not building bridges. I'm thinking that in your, looking at your structure, you might be able to sell, solve us. And save us a person over there somewhere.
I feel like the number of culverts that we consider bridges ourselves, the state does not recognize them as a bridge, that are in bad repair that need repaired. We cannot be without that position. I mean, if we look at this map here, this is just a bridge in cul- this is a bridge man. Some of them are culverts by state classification. I can tell you, this one right here, I just drove through it, is down six inches off the road base because it's going bad. This one, there's, Philman right there, no.
How many people are you gonna need to do that?
You'll need three people in order to do that, to set piling and everything.
Okay.
You can't do it with just one person, because if you're setting even concrete pipe, four to six foot.
Your structure.
You need two people.
Your structure, there's three people on the bridge crew.
And we only have two people in there right now.
Yeah, that's full.
And we can't drive piling. We have no equipment.
But that's something that could come in later. But we have six other positions other than the one that you guys are talking about that are vacant right now. I don't think we should get rid of the one that you, it seems like you're hinting towards, just because of. What we need to do in order to get these right. And I haven't been around all of them yet, but I've been to four of them that are having problems. That need major work on them. And if we eliminate that position there.
Well, the equipment operator that we're, that we're hiring out right now, what is that particular to? Because we have someone particular to the bulldozer right now, correct?
They have had like a week or two train on them, I think. No, we haven't had it because all of our pits are underwater. They're underwater getting the data, that's why we're not able to do that feature route right now.
Okay.
I was thinking they've been assigned to since July.
Since the last person was gone, right?
Okay, it's only, it's only been on there like two weeks total.
Well, maybe only pushing time is fourteen days of pushing.
And it was in the sand pit and not like a normal.
So what are you thinking as far as hiring an equipment operator? When we advertise for equipment, what equipment are we looking at?
Firstly, it would be the excavator and the little loader to help out with the bridge crew because of the projects we have.
Someone who's skilled in that to begin with?
Or they can be trained in it.
Do we have people that would like to train in that?
That's, once we have the office, we have the office manager to help.
But I'm saying, do we currently have some people that you think we could?
I think we have one or two that we're willing to try that. Or would, would like to go that direction.
But currently, we do have a bridge crew, what, two guys now? That have, and we've had that in the past, right, where, we don't, we, we still. Even though we don't build big bridges, but we help, we assist them, we assist with the big bridges too, right? Well, so we do have a bridge crew, even though we don't hire, we don't hire the excavator guys and all that, but we still have a bridge crew.
We've built bridges in the house ourselves, as Tanner was telling me, even fairly recently where the span was over, no.
Not the whole thing. Yes, done the work for the blanking and whatnot, but yeah, we've, we've contracted out for.
But we, but we assist the contractors.
I wasn't there to know exactly what we're gonna do.
I think the last one we actually did was out by Jeff lines. On the mile and drive, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Oh, you mean a while ago. I'm talking about just this little bridge out west of town.
That one we hired a contractor to do. Now, I think the highway crew did some of it, yes.
But that's what I'm saying, we to.
We finished the building.
Start to finish, I can't tell you that there, that we've done one start to finish since I've been here. Two and a half years.
I, I'd agree with that, looking at the shape of what they are, just because there, there's a lot that are failing that need. There need to be redone. We don't have the people for it.
So I, can, would you entertain a five-minute executive session with just the board to talk about the budget? Okay, I moved to recess into executive session for five minutes to discuss this particular budget. I guess that's not really executive session. It would be.
Highway Department Finance.
Yeah, hi- yeah, Highway Department Finances. It's not really the budget, although we are working within the budget. This year that was approved for the same dollar amount as we were last year, and my problem with that is we're starting to up prices for certain things without. Thinking about what we did in our budget, so.
Do you wanna say like regarding payroll?
Yes. Yeah, for payroll line item. Um, pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen to be, uh, whatever number is for employer employee negotiations. Number three. Employer employee negotiations, whether or not in con- complication with the representative of, um, a public body or agency.
To reconvene.
To reconvene in the commission room with just the board.
Not me, right?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Those in favor, vote aye. Aye, motion carries.
Okay, and Randy seconded. Thank you. I'm out to lunch, sorry. Continue.
What's that real title, Highway Department, what?
Road Supervisor.
Road Supervisor. I move to hire Gordon Krue as the Lincoln County Road Supervisor. As an exempt position with a salary of fifty thousand dollars per annum. Starting immediately, starting immediately.
You gotta go through testing with me.
Um, subject to pre-employment screening.
Successful passing a pre-employment screening.
Okay, I'll second that. And then as a point of discussion, we are changing this job description to salary instead of hourly. And we're changing it to exempt, which means we won't be paying out any overtime. Anything else? Any further discussion?
Just tell just forty hours a week, correct?
I guess we didn't put a minimum on there.
We did. Forty's what we had. We stay with forty.
Forty minimum.
He's gonna do a lot more than forty hours a week.
Called for a vote, uh, question?
Yeah, when you hire people, don't they have to have certificates showing that they have completion of training, certified operators? Because if just high level position, experience doesn't count. You should separate the difference.
Um, certification, like certification of.
Like the technical school graduates that have their certification, they're in engineer operation.
I don't think we have anyone with that.
No, and, uh, I've seen what the college puts out and I, I haven't been quite impressed with what. The members have dealt with that have graduated from their program and they can build flat pads, but they cannot. I haven't seen them do great things on road work or with their work with the dozer.
I think that probably depends on the person.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, we don't, we aren't retaining any certifications except you do have a CDL? Okay, that is one requirement that we have. I'm sure, we verified that in the other process of application, but. Everyone has to have their CDL or be willing to. And within six, is it six months? Be willing to get it within six months. Um, we don't have currently any certification. Process.
I do, I have a commercial CDL.
Oh, okay, I was talking about the equipment.
Which is different from a straight CDL.
EA or whatever that's called.
Yeah, it's, I can drive anything anywhere.
Yeah, which is good.
And I, DOT, physical and all that's involved.
Right, you gotta do that every year now.
Any other discussion, questions? Those in favor, vote aye. Motion carries. Okay. Dawn, as acting HR, would you be willing to set up the preliminary screening process so that you can do that? And once you're done with that, you can contact Brendan and he can get you what you need for keys and access and. Office space.
In the very near future, we'd like to have an organizational meeting with the two of you to sit down and so everybody understands exactly who's gonna do what and when and where and how.
Yeah, and I had started explaining some of this, um, but it's actually not any kind of private information. I had proposed a few times what I saw as the structure of the department, which is obviously up for total amendments. But, um. We need to address the bridge situation, culvert situation, as you were explaining. I mean, it is overwhelming. There's a lot there. That's why I even started on that line of thinking is that someone needs to be designated to take care of that, because I, I can see it being a full-time job. Just to get it organized and have planning and materials ordered and things like that and. There has to be some sort of separation of duties, because we don't want duplicate duties, so we.
I think we could have a full-time call, but Krue will catch up in two, three years.
You guys will have to discuss that once and then.
And how many people you need and what additional equipment you need and things like that. That's what we really need to discuss. And we do have some room in the budget due to not purchasing anything major. And here we are at the first of October, coming. We have a whole another quarter, but to, to align our views on what needs purchase so that you can streamline that productivity. I think that's what we need to do as a commission is see how we're gonna spend that, what we can do to benefit the whole department.
I know you need, you need of equipment, mowers, mower tractors for one, some other equipment, like you got, uh, that ridge. With that thing you pull behind it to pack. You guys are, I know you're in a need of equipment, mowers, mower tractors for one, some other equipment, like that, uh, that ridge, with that thing you pull behind it to pack down. That needs fixed, yeah, grid roller and other equipment, but, uh, but the bridges is one issue. And obviously then you're dealing with Brent, uh, Tanner, who helps with our big bridges, you know, and, uh, with sur- permits and all that, which, but you still get involved, you're going to, right? You guys will. And that's gonna have to be coordinated, and you have to determine who's dealing all that. You'll have to do that together there, however you figure out best to do that. But we do have a tremendous amount of, like Dave Bell was in here, small little culverts, bridges, different sizes, those are, we have a lot of them, you guys know that in the county. Now, that's a big priority, but, uh.
So I think what we need to do is sit down and go over job descriptions, change them according to what your suggestions are, the both of you, and how you see things playing out. And tomorrow, you're having interviews.
Tomorrow we're meeting, Brendan and I are meeting with, uh, some candidates.
So that position will play into that a little bit, as far as, you know, how the communication goes, and we'll just kind of work on it here over the next few weeks.
Yes.
Should I mention that?
No. Okay.
Was that it?
We have a comment or question?
Yeah, I have another issue that was discussed. What is, what's the celebrate with Columbus Day? Because Columbus is not a legitimate person.
No, that's, that's not an issue we're gonna get into.
You brought it up as per subject, you opened up the door.
No, uh, the federal government says there's a Columbus Day, and that's good enough for us. We're not gonna get in here and debate whether or not Columbus is real or not.
We normally have meetings with employees on that day, uh, so, but this year we're not gonna do, that's all, we're, that's the only issue we have with Columbus down here.
Need to be corrected.
Wrong form.
Do you wanna keep that? At the hospital, do you have more?
Yes, yes.
I have the Fullston Seaford thing.
I'll try to make copies.
Oh, the, okay, could you please find paragraph nine? Yeah, we can ask.
I got, I want to.
Oh, we can ask them, yeah.
I actually have, I don't know why I have two copies. That's the original.
And would you sign at the bottom?
No, 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 that's, she wants to read number nine. And I can read eloquently, but not in public.
What's this?
Did he?
Yeah, did he.
I don't know. A packet? A separate packet?
David has one.
Did you get a bunch of past budgets from the hospital?
Yes. I do.
Okay.
Is that what you mean? For the PBC, I requested, is that what you mean?
Oh, okay, um, yeah.
For the PBC, yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, section nine, uh, the engagement letter, conclusion of representation, retention, and disposition of documents. Unless previously terminated, our representation of the board will terminate upon our sending the board our final statement for services rendered in this matter. Following such termis- termination, any otherwise non-public information the board has supplied to us and which is retained by us will be kept confidential in accordance with applicable rules of professional conduct. At the board's request, the board's papers and property will be returned to it promptly upon receipt of payment for outstanding fees and costs. We will retain our files for the matter. These firm files include, for example, firm administrative records, time and expense reports, personnel and staffing materials, and credit and accounting records, and internal lawyers' work products such as drafts, notes, internal memoranda, copies of various documents supplied by the client, and legal and factual research, including investigative reports prepared for, by, or for the internal use of lawyers. All such documents retained in the firm will be transferred to the person responsible for administering our records retention program. If the board would like to make copies of our files, the board or its new lawyer can arrange to make copies of all of our papers that we believe are necessary to continue representation. We will ask the board to pay any additional cost of copying for various reasons, including the minimization of unnecessary storage expenses we reserve the right to destroy or otherwise dispose of any such documents or other contained by us within a reasonable time after the termination of the engagement.
Did that one of those bills include the phrase, "This is the final bill"?
Yeah.
Okay.
He did send the final bill.
So you have to pay your bill before you have to pay for.
And we have to pay for copies of the information, which we don't need copies of the financial information that, that is the one thing, I guess, that we paid for was to receive the financial information from Lincoln Park Manor, which we did receive from Mister Hay. So we don't need copies of that. But basically, they're saying at their leisure, they may choose to exclude any correspondence that they've had that we've paid for and/or how it was billed, or the time. Typical, it's laughable. Um, I guess we need to address what we would like done then. Would we like, I mean, we have a few things for Mrs. O'Hare. I guess, while you guys are here, we had asked the, the county attorney to put out forbid a new mapping of the road, um, situation where we have the Wilson Lake Estates. There's a big landslide there that you've probably heard about. And so what we wanted was a new map created, but you called it as-built.
As-built, yeah, what's on the ground today.
So it may not be, we wanna see exactly what the differences are between what's there now and what was there when we approved it, because according to what the Lincoln Commission approved years ago.
There was correspondence in two thousand and ten from Mister O'Hare to the Wilson Lake Homestead Association, talking about Lark Lane Ridge Circle, that they were, the rightway was not established correctly, so we were not going to maintain them.
Had we been maintaining them?
I don't know, I was just following.
Isn't Ridge the one that, or that, Ridge Circle's different than Ridge Road?
Ridge is at the top of.
Yes, Ridge is the main one.
Right off the highway.
Lark is not the one that slid, but it was in regards to the roads not being built with the correct rightway and the correct locations.
But I know we've been maintaining Ridge. Yeah, since then, I'm saying.
We had our some, I just, I remember when I, from coming off the top, and they, they did maintain, but only like once a year, twice a year.
Yeah, it said it'd be.
It was like a minimum maintenance thing, but there was like two foot of snow there, I think we'd well in there and help them out and stuff. But I don't think they did it like monthly or normally.
Do you have those files over there?
What did you say that Jennifer said, that, that it be, it wasn't our, you said she told you something about what she had said for whether or not it's our responsibility for the Wilson Lake Estates?
I'm not agreeing for answering that because you told me I was wrong, and so.
Wrong for what? I didn't say you were wrong.
Wrong with what I said.
No, I said what you told us that Jennifer said was wrong. So could you repeat what she said, what Jennifer said?
If it's wrong, then I'm not gonna repeat it.
Well, what was it, though?
I'm not gonna repeat it. If it's wrong, it's wrong.
Did Jennifer tell you something about what she told the commission as far as our obligation to.
She told me what you stated that was said in closed session was not what she stated in closed session. That's what she told me.
Did she restate to you something to correct that?
No.
She didn't tell you anything?
She just told me that she did not tell you guys that these roads were your liability.
Well, that's not what you said last week. You said that she told you.
Then let's just end this, and I won't repeat what she said, and we'll be done with that, because what if I re- reiterated it incorrectly? So why don't you guys just get her and you guys figure it out?
No, I'd like a clarification, please, because last week you said Jennifer O'Hare told me what she told you in executive session, which was what? What was it?
What I just said to you, that that's not what she told you about the roads being open, necessarily open.
Then what, then what is it? Because we need the clarification. She has gotten no, she has given no correspondence to the.
Then I was correct with that.
She has given no correspondence to this board, and we've actually corresponded with her professionally and asked for a res- a resolve. So whatever she told you, I wanna know.
That's what she told me.
She told you that they were not our responsibility unless we keep saying, and you said.
No, what she said.
Unless we keep saying, you said the commission, she told me that the commission keeps saying in public session, and they aren't our responsi- uh, she told us.
No, that's not what I said.
That they were our responsibility unless we do.
What I said was that what you told her, or what you told the public was said in executive session was not what she said in executive session. That's what she told me.
She also told you what she told us, which was.
No, she did not.
Yes, she did. You said that last week. Dawn, don't sit here and lie. You said it last week.
I'm not lying.
You said it.
You told me.
Some of you were here last week.
What I said was that that's not necessarily what she told you in executive session, that's what she told me.
And then you went on to say something else, Dawn, so let's not pretend that you didn't. You said, she said that she told us.
But that's where you, you said I was incorrect, so I'm not repeating something that's incorrect. I'm not getting in the middle of two, two different conversations.
No, you can, but you can tell me what she said.
No, you continue to say whatever it is that you are saying that she said in executive session, and I'm not going to correct you on it.
No, I told you that we do have an obligation there, and it's already been established, and you said Jennifer told me that she told you, your board, in executive session, that you don't have obligations there unless you keep presenting it in pub- in public session.
That is not what I said.
That is what you said, and I, I wanna, I wanna know.
But why doesn't matter?
That is not what I said.
For what? Why?
Because I'm tired of having correspondence with an attorney, that then reveals.
Even, can I say what I said, because I don't remember saying all of that.
It doesn't matter. Let's get Jennifer again, we'll determine what, whether we have.
But Dawn, you're denying that she told you what she told us.
Alexis, why do you keep pressing it?
What does it matter? You said it was false.
It doesn't matter.
So what does it matter?
We'll figure it out.
Because now you're pretending like it ever happened. Let's not pretend. I'm not here to pretend. I'm here to talk about the reality.
Both of you, quit. Quit. We got a two to one vote, quit.
Yeah, yeah, Alexis, we'll find out whether we're responsible or not. That's the issue here. No use quibbling about it here, or personally, you know, getting in a fight here with Dawn.
We have an attorney who is acquiring open records from our board and billing us for her not knowing what to do with the information besides going out and hiring an outside attorney.
Well, we'll discuss that.
We have an attorney that's telling us things in executive session, then going to the county clerk and telling her what was said in executive session that I was misrepresenting it. This is not kosher at all.
We'll discuss that with the attorney. Don't hassle Dawn about it.
She's now pretending like she didn't say that last week. I want a clarification.
I am not pretending. I am just saying, I am not repeating it. If you say it's false, that's all there is.
You're afraid to say that you were given information from the county attorney about our executive session.
I move this meeting be adjourned.
Well, are we done with our business? Alexis, we'll give it, we'll give it to the attorney, and we'll figure out what the issue is. We'll go from there. You know, it, it isn't, first of all, this is a very, this is a very upset, uh, issue that's hard to determine because of them road situation up there. They built them in the old days when they built those houses, and there was, they were just made like, people made their driveways. All of a sudden now, do we inherit that driveway?
We don't know that until we get all of our stuff. So quit beating the dead horse.
Right, and so. Right, but it is, it's a very, nobody knows for sure. It's really up in the air whether it's possible or not, that's.
Why are you arguing about it?
Well, we're not, we're just explaining it here.
Sounds to me like an argument.
Well, we need to talk about, uh, with Jennifer, and we gotta find out for sure. That's where we're at.
Could you please contact Susan Marshall? I think we need to start there with someone who has some historical knowledge about what was going on at the time. And we will try to figure out in a chronological order. In the meantime, I don't see a problem with pursuing the other option that Brendan presented to us.
With the, with the road, yeah.
Of rerouting it.
Yeah, reroute, oh, yeah. I think that's our option. We should close them, what you pointed out the other last week, because that, we are not gonna fix that cliff there.
Okay.
That, that's a Mount Grand Canyon fall out there, it's ten, a million dollars there, and it ain't gonna help nothing. So we need to go, we need to close that road and go around.
Yeah, we have to, but we have to, we have to have an option, another option first, has to be available.
Well, I don't, we're never gonna fix that road, in my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, but you got, you seen that up there with that landslide? Well, you go look at that now, when you get, when you get done. Brendan, show you.
When you get started.
Do we have any more business to come before the board, besides?
We have interviews tomorrow and Wednesday at six, you guys, for the county hospital board. That's all I remember.
Wednes- yeah, you have tomorrow, but that's not an open meeting tomorrow. We have an open meeting on Wednesday, and we were gonna see if Pitt can come on Wednesday? Okay, any further business?
Yeah.
The, uh, adjourned.